Good evening and welcome to this February 1st meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning, and transportation issues. Each Planning Commissioner has been appointed by the City Council to serve a three-year term for a maximum of two terms. On some items, the Planning Commission has final decision-making authority, while other items, the City Council will make the final decision. As we begin this evening, we're going to start with the Pledge Allegiance, all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have five items on our agenda this evening. We have two public hearings and three study items. The first two items are public hearings. On public hearings, the public is encouraged to testify. You can do that here at City Hall, and we'll talk more about that when we open a public hearing on item number one. You can also testify remotely. If you're at home watching this live this evening, those instructions will be on the bottom of your screen scrolling as we go through the public hearings. With that, we'll begin with item number one, which is a preliminary and final development plan for an apartment building just off of 494. I'm sorry, I don't have the address, but Ms. O'Day, I'm sure you can help me with that as we get started.
Thank you, Chair and Commission. Item one on your agenda this evening is for a preliminary and final development plan for a five-story, 208-unit apartment building and a detached 11,000-square-foot daycare and a conditional use permit for said daycare at 6701 West 78th Street. To orient you to the site, this is just north of 494 between East and Bush Lake Road. Surrounding land uses are single-family, city edina jurisdiction to the north, offices to the east and west, and then 494 to the south. Just a note about zoning, it is Zone C4 and guided office. The base zoning and the guide plan are not, will remain unchanged. And then just a view of the current condition on the site from a street view perspective. As you can see, it's a vacant lot with lots of vegetation. A little bit of history on the site. On the right is a 2003 Ariel. It was a health club, and then in 2006, it was demolished. And then several years later, City Council approved a development proposal for a four-story, 186-unit residential care and senior living facility with 100-person daycare. Those approvals have expired and development never took place. And then more recently, City Council approved a privately initiated City Code Amendment to change daycares from limited to conditional uses in the C4 zoning district, which ultimately allowed for the applicant to move forward with their current proposal. A little bit about the site plan. Overall, they're providing 208 units. 19 of those would be at 60% area median income, which is the minimum for the OHO. And then the remaining 189 units would be market rate. And then just a couple of things to highlight on the site plan. Currently, there are three curb cuts onto 78th Street. They're proposing to have the easternmost access be a right-in, right-out only, and then the western would be a full access, which would require some median modifications. And then the southwest corner of the site is undevelopable. It's the Nine Mile Creek Wetland area. And then just to show the underground garage entrances toward the back of the site. And then, of course, the 11,000-square-foot daycare would be located on the western half of the site. And then just note outdoor amenities, they're showing an outdoor pool and plaza area. So in the C4 zoning district, they're required to have .2 floor area ratio, which amounts to 61,000 square feet of non-residential area. And so if we eliminate the undevelopable land in the southwest corner of the site, what remains is 42, almost 42 and a half thousand square feet. And so what they're proposing is the 11,000-square-foot daycare, which amounts to .03 floor area ratio, and that's considerably less than what's required. So they're requesting development flexibility due to reasons such as a large portion of the site is undevelopable, and it's financially infeasible to provide 61,000 square feet of non-residential area. And then from a staff's perspective, economic and environmental perspectives, and providing daycare, which fills a kind of gap in the market. This is overall benefit-seeing development because it's been vacant for 17 years. And then here's a couple of elevations. They're showing balconies for select units, and then they're showing for materials, glass, brick, concrete, metal siding, and fiber cement board. And they are taking advantage of the OHO for the fiber cement board, which allows for more secondary materials located on the non-street-facing side. So overall, the building materials are compliant. And then daycare elevation, this does not qualify for the OHO incentive, so they have to meet the 15% secondary, 85% primary materials, and they are code-compliant. They're showing brick, metal siding, and fiber cement board. And then here's, going back to the residential building, here's the first-floor plan. As you can see, there's studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units on all five floors. And then on the first floor, they're showing amenities such as game room, yoga fitness area, and then, of course, the pool and outdoor plaza area. And then there's a rooftop deck on the top level. A little bit about the daycare. That Code Amendment made daycare as a conditional use in the C4 zoning district, so they are applying for the conditional use permit tonight. The applicant has not identified a daycare provider at this time, so they have provided some comparable daycare information for this application. So they're showing 150 children with 30 caregivers. And just to note that if that increases, they will have to come back for an amendment to their conditional use permit. And they're also showing a 5,000-square-foot playground toward the back. So here's a standard floor plan, pretty standard and typical of daycares. So they're showing a multi-purpose room, classrooms, of course, office space, and then the outdoor play area. Back to the residential building, their landscaping is code-compliant in terms of quantity of trees and shrubs. A couple minor tweaks are needed, which can be handled at building permit level. They have to fill in some gaps of screening located toward West 78th Street. That has to be a solid screen. And then parking lot islands do require trees, and so they're showing three islands without trees, so those have to be provided. As far as parking goes, 381 stalls are required for the development when applying the OHO 10% parking reduction. They're showing 358 stalls on-site, 210 of which are in a one-level underground garage, and then 148 on the surface. And so they are requesting development flexibility for the parking, and due to varying times between the daycare and the residential use, the 148 surface stalls would be shared. And then just a couple miscellaneous items for further review. The public sidewalk width has to be widened to eight feet. They're showing six feet currently, so it has to be widened two feet. As well as photometric plans have to be submitted for the billing permit, and then interior trash collection is required for the daycare. So just a couple notes on that. And then I just wanted to show renderings of the site, just to kind of give you a flavor of what it would look like. And with that, staff is recommending approval, and the applicant is online, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. O'Day. Any questions for staff from the Planning Commission? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. I see in the plan for the daycare that there is a kitchen. Does staff know if there's food planning to be prepared on-site, or is it going to be catered?
Chair, Commissioner Goldsman, I think because a daycare provider has not been identified, that's maybe a little bit unknown at this point, but if the applicant knows kind of what the food preparation looks like, I ask them to speak to that.
Okay, I'll wait till we have that opportunity. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Seeing none, we will now hear from the applicant, who I believe is online. If you, Ms. O'Day, the name of the applicants, do you know?
Yep, Brian Bachman and Griffin Jamison.
Right, Mr. Bachman and Mr. Jamison. I believe we will unmute you now and give you a chance to speak. Or you can unmute yourself, I believe. Mr. Bachman or Mr. Jamison, we can't hear you yet.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. My name's Brian Bachman, I'm with the Enclave Companies. To answer the one direct question, no, we don't have, we're working with several different daycare providers right now to kind of figure out who's going to fit best on the site, so we don't really know how food service will be handled on that yet. Beyond that, I think Liz did a great job of outlining anything, and don't have a whole lot more to add, and just here to answer any questions and be able to clear up anything that comes up.
Very well, thank you. Mr. Jamison, if you'd like to speak, I'll give you a minute to do so if you choose.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name's Griffin Jamison with Cos Wilson Architects. I'm here just to say hello and answer any questions that may come up as well, and really all I have for the time being. Thank you.
Very well. Questions now from the Planning Commission for the applicant. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. It sounds like you guys are anticipating to potentially sell off the daycare after that's developed and subdivide the site. Do you have any idea where you would plan to subdivide the site, is along the shared parking at all, or can you give us any idea on that?
We really haven't. We're working with one group that wants us to do a build-to-suit, another that would want to do the other, and then another one that's kind of says either-or. The answer would be is, I think right now, and Griffin could correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure what we had always planned was the lot would basically run right along the edge of the parking field that's running on the side of that building. They would have those dedicated spots in the front, and then we would work out a shared parking agreement for staff and other parking that they need along the side of the building. Since the obvious times for the daycare uses work well with when a great many of our tenants are going to be working, we feel real comfortable that we can handle the parking, the shared parking with both properties.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up then. I don't know if you guys have done, obviously, the FAR is much lower than what the city has for the zoning code, but have you done any sort of, you know, just basic math as to what the FAR would be on that subdivision after, yeah, after you guys subdivide the property? Does it become more in line with code?
I haven't done that. I'm not sure if staff has.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner Curry?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you. One thing that I read in the packet was a concern around snow removal. Can either staff or the applicant talk about what the plans are for snow removal, if it ever snows again, on the property and the site?
I can take that. We obviously are going to have some spaces on the site that we can stack snow, but this would be an export site. If we had a winter that looked anything like last winter as opposed to this winter, we truck it out when we don't, when we cease to have room.
Thank you.
So I'm kind of liking this year much better than last year.
Mr. Bachman, I have a question. So the south face of your, particularly the apartment building face is 494. A lot of the buildings on 494 have a very sort of dynamic street presence to announce themselves to that corridor. It doesn't appear that your building's going to have that. Was there any consideration on your end to have any type of a dynamic or call it what you want, lighting, et cetera, on the south face of your building?
There is some, there is some unique lighting prospect projected to be on the corners of the building that are going to be on those insets. Nope, that's actually something that's been discussed and is already being planned. With the volume of traffic that travels past on 494, it's an obvious area where we need to be able to identify the building. So no, the exterior and the rest, that'll continue to be hammered out as we finalize our construction drawings.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. My question is back to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance and the parking requirement. There is a 23-stall difference. Have you thrown around what it would look like to incorporate an additional 23 stalls? And what are the barriers there?
To do so, we'd have to lose units, which makes the project and the property not feasible. Even with the daycare spaces, we're at about a 1.6 to 1 ratio on-site, which is well within our typical unit mix. Our projects usually are between 1.6 and 1.8 per unit. Our other project that we're just finishing up over on 35W and called Noble is actually at a 1.5 to 1. So that one's even a little bit lower than this one. So no, this is, parking is not really a concern for us. It's actually, and that's the wrong way for me to say it, parking is a huge concern from us. It's something that we kind of fixate on early and often during our design process from this very simple fact that underparked sites don't have repeat customers. We could build the coolest apartment in the world with all the finest amenities that you could ever possibly get, and if people don't have a place to park when they come home at night, they're not going to renew, right? They're going to leave. So it is always something that we study, it's always something that we manage very closely with our management team. We are a, we are the developer, the contractor, the manager, and the long-term owner of all of our projects. We never, we don't sell our projects. So we don't, when we design things, we're designing them to own them 30 years from now, so we always take parking as a very strong consideration as to how we can do with site. We actually had a couple of different versions of this that had a few extra units and even a little less parking, and this is kind of where we settled. We actually added on to the building footprint, the parking footprint, the underground part, so that we can pick up even more parking spots. They're very, very expensive parking spots, but we still just wanted to make sure that we could get everybody covered. So we're pretty comfortable with where we are on it because we're at a 1.71 with the shared parking with the daycare center. So we're pretty much in our sweet spot with that.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Again, in terms of parking, is there, I guess, do you have any plans to have guest parking specifically defined, or is all parking open to residents and guests?
All of the underground parking is assigned, and then all of this, all of the parking in, the surface parking is not assigned. That is just open parking. We do require tabs if you're going to be parking there overnight longer than just like a guest. You'll have a parking pass that you'll hang on your windshield so that we know that the people that are on-site are, you know, which vehicles belong to which units.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, Mr. Bachman, Mr. Jamison, thank you.
Thank you.
I will open the public hearing now, and again, folks here at the council chambers are encouraged to testify if they so choose. The way this will work is we'll give each speaker about three minutes to speak, that makes sure we give everybody a chance. There's a sign-in sheet on the dais. We'll ask you to make sure you speak into the microphone so the folks on TV can hear you. And a note of clarification, the way this generally works is it's a public comment period and not as much of a public question and answer period. That keeps things moving and gives everybody a chance to speak. You are welcome to ask us questions. You can direct those to me, the Chair. The Planning Commission will make note of those questions, and we'll decide how we want to address those once the public hearing is closed. With that, if anyone would like to testify on this item, please come forward and sign in.
Hello, I'm already signed in.
Thank you. If we could have your name, please.
Woodrow Piner.
Thank you.
Thanks for allowing me to speak here tonight. My name's Woodrow Piner. I'm a business representative with the North Central States Regional Council of Carpenters. The NCSRCC represents over 27,000 men and women carpenters in our six-state council, which includes Minnesota, Iowa, Wisconsin, Nebraska, North, and South Dakota. I've been on staff for nine years with my primary focus being the director of the Twin Cities Wage, Staff, and Exploitation Team. In that role, myself and others track projects where subcontractors and general contractors use below-board numbers obtained by practices that involve cash payments to workers on paid overtime, misclassification, and workers' compensation fraud. The previously mentioned practices are typically targeting an immigrant workforce, and in some cases have went as far as trafficking workers in narcotics. The NCSRCC has been working with law enforcement, state and city-elected officials, and other trades to shine a bright light on these exploitive practices that prey on workers and tax dollars. Despite these efforts over the last seven years, there continues to be a group of developers and general contractors that look the other way to gain an uncompetitive advantage on price and profit at the expense of workers' dignity and our tax dollars. I'm here tonight speaking on the Enclave proposal at 6701 West 78th Street. Enclave is a developer-GC combo originally based out of North Dakota that entered the Twin Cities market in the tail end of 2019. Red flags were raised immediately upon their arrival in regards to a out-of-state wood-frame subcontractor, Icon Construction, who had several federal OSHA and labor violations. Enclave had hired them on their first three projects. The NCSRCC tried reaching out to Enclave to discuss the issues, but received nothing but radio silence. It was not until a proposal in Brooklyn Park with Enclave where they were requesting a $2.4 million tax income financing for a 146-unit building that Enclave would have to respond publicly to some of these practices being reported by workers on their projects. After testimony was given in regards to red flags of exploitative practices on Enclave projects, the city of Brooklyn Park decided not to award the TIF. It was not until then that Enclave reached out to the NCSRCC to discuss some of the problems articulated in the testimonies. It appeared that progress had been made. The project in Brooklyn Park moved on, but had shrunk in size without the $2.4 million in TIF. Enclave moved on to another subcontractor that although different in name, utilized the same business model. Wolf Construction Incorporated was awarded the framing package, and despite warnings, Enclave moved on with them. Subsequently, the labor broker, Nelson Lopez, who had provided Wolf with the labor force on that project, was charged and pled guilty to workers' comp premium fraud last year. The Star Tribune ran a story on the case and actually mentioned that Brooklyn Park project in the story. Enclave made some attempts to clean up the subcontractors they hired by hiring a wood-frame company that pays area standards and wages and benefits for their initial Bloomington project. Since then, things have turned in a different direction on ongoing projects around the Twin Cities. MINDAC Commercial Construction Services LLC, Innovated Services, and Absolute Drywall Incorporated have been hired on recent and ongoing projects. Workers from all three of these companies have reported being paid cash, not being paid overtime, and not being covered by a workers' comp policy that would compensate them if injury occurred. In fact, Absolute Drywall Incorporated has one federal and two state findings depicting child labor, unpaid overtime, and misclassification.
Mr. Piner, we've got you at three minutes.
Here tonight hoping that this testimony helps provide a pathway for this proposal to provide good middle-class jobs and not a race to the bottom for workers in Bloomington and the Twin Cities. Thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing no one stepping forward, do we have anyone online, Mr. Mark Agard?
Chair Cooked in. Everyone online is the applicant or city staff.
Very well, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will now move to Planning Commission discussion. I actually have a question for staff I'd like to clarify. Ms. O'Day, so in the staff report, I noticed the notification of public notification that we included edina. Is that a new thing? I thought we didn't notify sister cities. Has that changed?
Chair, we did notify edina staff, and I don't know what we've done in the past, maybe.
Mr. Mark Agard?
Yes, Chair Cooked in. We did notify everybody within 500 feet, including edina residents.
Thank you. And Ms. O'Day, I apologize for not emailing you earlier about this, but there was one condition I was hoping I could ask you about, which is condition number 29, which I'll just read here. Compliance with Minnesota Rules Chapter 7030 noise pollution control is required. There was a note in the staff report that noise may be a concern with the proximity to 494. When we've had noise applications before, so it was always my understanding that an applicant's surrounding uses are not something, sorry, the noise that surrounds them is not something they're responsible for, that they're really kind of responsible for themselves. Could you maybe just talk a little bit more about that?
Chair, yeah, so there is a condition that the noise has to be compliant with the Minnesota statute. I'm kind of struggling to answer your question, maybe.
Perhaps, maybe I'll ask, is that boilerplate language, or is that something unique to this site?
Oh, that's boilerplate language.
Okay.
Yep.
Not that we didn't think about it. Okay. All right, now we will move into additional Planning Commission discussion. Commissioner Curry.
I guess, just in light of the public testimony, my first question, I guess, for the city is, do we, are any of the topics that were brought up, is that within our purview to think about or discuss? What do we, is that something we should be thinking about?
Perhaps that's a question for Mr. Toski.
Yeah, you have a conditional use permit application, preliminary and final development plan, so those are what are called quasi-judicial type of applications. So you apply the facts, as they've been laid out, to what the standards are in the ordinance, and that's all you're to consider. So if they meet all those standards in the ordinance, then you could approve the application. But things that are extraneous to that, no, you wouldn't be able to consider those as part of your recommendation.
Thank you, Assistant City Attorney Kevin Toski. Further discussion? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. Just talking about the application in front of us here, as the city of Bloomington is always looking for more housing, I was excited to see this application again. I've seen it in 2018 when I was on the commission, and was happy to see it increased from 160-odd units to 208 units. So great to see that that is an additional housing stock for our community. I'm also very happy with the 19 affordable units as well. Glad to see that that's there. The other thing I was really excited to see is the mix of studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units. I think three bedrooms are something that we need more of for growing families. more of for growing families and looking at the adjacent use of a daycare. What a great amenity for a family that potentially could be, you know, working remote and kids go to daycare there. So I think it, it would be great to have those two uses on one, on one property. Overall, I think, you know, those are some of my comments on the, on the development as a whole. I don't think I have any other comments. I think overall, I'm, I'm in support.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. Other comments? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. Given Commissioner Curry's question about the public testimony, I don't want to gloss over that. I appreciate the information coming forward and would encourage you all to testify at the city council meeting as well where they have a little more discretion on some of these issues. Because similar to Commissioner Goldsman, the findings here are made and whereas I, you know, am concerned about some of the items that you brought up, our discretion is kind of minimal in terms of what we can and can't do. However, additional housing, like Commissioner Goldsman said, is important for the city of Bloomington. I think also daycare and safe facilities for our kids are also very, very important and the demand for daycare facilities is very high. So good to see both of these two uses for the city of Bloomington, especially in such a, an area where it's easy to get to and from for a lot of jobs elsewhere. So I am in support of the application and would also encourage public testimony for the city council.
Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht. Couple of things I thought about when I was reviewing this. You know, I generally find it to be a good proposal. As much as I wish an office tower could go here, it's not reasonable to think that. It's been vacant for 17 years. We all know where the office market is at right now. It's not going to happen. And so I think this is a fine application. I am a little sensitive to the flexibility requested on density. You know, when I think about density, I'm more sensitive to some places than others. And for those planning commission super fans out there, they might know that I'm very sensitive to it in Bloomington Central Station and in South Loop. Another place I am sensitive to it is along 494. That is a place for high density development. It's a, it's the right type of project in the right location. And I do find that those are, those parcels of budding 494 are the most welcoming towards high density. So as much as I wish this met all of our floor area ratio requirements, I think when you look at the plans and look at it practically, that daycare is not that big and it's almost just more of a, it's a quirky site. And I think there's justification for not meeting the density there. Sure, I wish it met the FAR, but I think the public benefit here is greater than any loss in density that we might see. The other flexibility being requested is the parking deviation. I think particularly noting that the applicant said they plan to hang on to this and operate it themselves. I think that's, that's good justification that they're not going to underpark their own site, particularly at a place where there is literally zero street parking available. So I trust the applicant has done their homework and is not going to underpark their own site. So with that, I am supportive of this application tonight. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I guess I would mirror Commissioner Albrecht's comments and I, you know, fully appreciate the commentary made tonight and, you know, it's not, it's not something I guess that we can get into. So I'd encourage you to go speak with the city council as well. In terms of the application specifically, the Florida area ratio shortage, my questions earlier regarding the subdivision were kind of, were directed towards what does ultimately the Florida area ratio become. And I think, and I guess I don't really have a problem with it. I think at, you know, at some point, it's going to be much closer to what it's intended to be. So in terms of parking, I think, you know, the two uses kind of complement each other in terms of the times that parking is needed during the day. And it sounds like guest parking, which I have actually heard of, a project that I have had some involvement with. I didn't create it or anything, but heard some complaints from tenants that there was no guest parking and that was a major problem. So I appreciate the applicant's comments regarding guest parking and that, and their concern about any sort of parking shortage. So no concerns about the parking there and also think, yeah, we definitely need more housing in Bloomington. So I'm in, in support.
Very well. We've all had a chance to speak. Does anyone want to have a second go here? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to make a motion if that's helpful.
Please.
In case PL 2023-193, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of preliminary and final development for a five-story, 208-unit apartment building and detached 11,000 square foot daycare space at 6701 West 78th Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval, recommended approval of preliminary and final development plans at 6701 West 78th Street. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes 4-0. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. In case PL 2023-193, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for an 11,000 square foot daycare at 6701 West 78th Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of a conditional use permit at the same site. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes 4-0. This item will move to the city council on February 12th as a consent item. And I want to clarify what that means. The city council, as opposed to the planning commission, has some of their items as consent, which means they're not brought up for discussion. However, an item can be taken off the consent agenda where there would be an opportunity to provide that testimony we heard this evening, which has been encouraged. So if you are hoping to provide testimony at the city council, the way that would work is you would reach out to a city council member and ask them to remove that from the consent agenda so you can provide that testimony. And those email addresses are available online and certainly the planning department could also help you with that. Okay. Thank you, planning commission. We'll move on to item number two, which is also a public hearing. And that's by the city of Bloomington as the applicant. It's a city code amendment for the sign code updates. Senior Planner Nick Johnson, we have you here at city hall. Welcome.
Good to see you all. Thank you, Acting Chair. Pull up my slides here. While I'm doing that, oops, we just had Landell's retirement party. So Landell peas for the super fans. He just ended along and a great career here for 30 years. So thanks to him and he helped with this project a lot too. I'm sorry. Okay, here we go. Thanks for your patience. So this is the, this is the public hearing. This is the third time we've been before you on the signed ordinance project. We've done two prior study sessions. And the reason that we're doing this is that, A, the project is on the planning commission work plan for 2023 and 2024. But as you know, the plant, the city sign ordinance has not been substantially updated since 1996. And there's been a significant amount of changes in case law surrounding expression, but also just changes in best practices, changes in technology, changes in a number of different things that touch on signage. And just for the audience and for, as a reminder for the planning commission, the balance points typical in sign ordinances is a balance between expression, which in many cases is good. Both commercial and non-commercial messages are really helpful and important, but also trying to strike a balance of public safety, the, the built environment, the aesthetics of the built environment, and trying to manage visual clutter and limit commercialism in non-commercial areas. Those are some of the things to think about as we go through this. So here is a basic agenda of what I intend to talk about. Because we did a pretty robust presentation of the draft sign code back in November, I'm going to try and focus more on some of the changes and some of the big picture policy changes that this ordinance would bring to you if adopted. So here's a basic agenda, the things we'll, we'll, we'll touch on. Just looking at the process and timeline that we've gone through. So again, this process really started in 2022 with the initial engagement and research components. But we came before the planning commission and city council in January of 2023. At that study session, we attempted to establish kind of broad or high level policy direction and a number of different questions that pertain to signs. We used that direction. We did a polling exercise and we used some of that direction to kind of help sharpen the decision points that we made in terms of drafting and researching the sign code. So from February, September, just that's really the heart of the research and drafting period. We did do a little bit of a, we took a little bit of a right turn and worked on mural standards. Murals were embedded in the sign code and we made a determination that it was prudent to take murals out of the sign ordinance and establish separate mural standards. And we did that in August of last year. And it went through its own public hearing process. You all were involved in that. Just recently in November, we presented the first full draft of our new sign code, both to the planning commission and city council. I'll add that we've been pretty consistent in trying to reach different sectors of the public as part of this process throughout the entirety of the year and had gotten a lot of feedback, gotten some good feedback. So I was certainly appreciative of the people who've leaned in and provided engagement in that regard. And then here, here we are tonight, public hearings in February of this year. And something I'll talk a little bit about at the end of my presentation, but staff is recommending circling back on this policy probably a year out, should the city adopt the new sign code. But I'll talk a little bit more about that. So we've presented this slide all three times. Forgive me for the duplication, but I just want to reiterate that the decision points that we've made throughout the process have attempted to check the box or advance the ball on these three matters. One, we want to conform with current legal standards. We'll talk about the, the aspect, the legal aspects in a moment. We want to improve the clarity and reduce complexity as staff kind of utilizing this ordinance over the years. We've noted a number of times where there can be conflicting provisions or just, it's just too hard to find the information that you're looking for. And on that note, we did want to improve the organization and formatting, improve the user experience and adopt kind of an organizational structure that's more consistent with model ordinances or best practices that we've observed or obtained. So I just want to point out these three things. On the legal front, so this is the first ordinance I've worked on where the legal department was a direct partner in the drafting. And that has to do just with the complexity around the First Amendment and expression. And this is, the sign ordinance is an intersection of First Amendment and expression and land use law. So that's what really ramps up the complexity, is that not only are you dealing with zoning matters, but you're dealing with some of these constitutional matters that make it complicated. So there's been some recent case, cases, as I mentioned, even up to the Supreme Court, United States Supreme Court, that have forced or required cities to reexamine their signage ordinances and make sure that, A, they're not creating different standards based on content, that they're treating non-commercial speech just as favorably, if not more favorably than commercial speech, and that there's not undue discretion in some of the city's decision making based on content of signs, basically. So not only were we directly partnering with the legal department, Kevin Toski, with myself, we also contracted with a nationally recognized expert, John Baker with Green Espil. He not only reviewed our existing sign code in kind of the midpoint of the year and pointed out several of the red flags that don't pass today's kind of legal landscape. He also reviewed our draft ordinance and some of the changes I'll talk about since we, he did that in December. Some of the updates I'll talk about from your last draft you reviewed in November is a direct result of his review, just kind of clarifying and cleaning some things up. So yeah, I feel really good about this aspect. I think we've approached it with the urgency and the caution that it requires. So the ordinance itself is 140 pages long. It's a long document. Most of it is the deletion of the existing sign ordinance, which is over 80 pages long. So that tells you something about our existing sign code. But in order to kind of help the public consumption of the full ordinance, we did create a summary table of just all the different changes of all the different code sections that were amended. But we did want to provide a summary as well and some of the most maybe significant changes. So we did move the, currently the variance provisions, both for zoning, all zoning variances are in chapter two under the planning commission section. We did create some specific findings and provisions that relate to sign variances and we moved that into the sign ordinance. We did make a few definition changes. There were a few things that, A, were redundant between our general definition section or just needed to be some undefined terms or some other considerations as it related to signs. And then we did delete both the full existing billboard section and the sign code in chapter 19. And then of course, we have the new sign code, which does include billboard standards proposed in chapter 21. In addition to that, the majority of changes are just a lot of cross references. The sign code is referenced in many different areas of the full city code, as well as the appendix A, which is the fee schedule. So there's some procedural or process things that also had to be updated. So in terms of what some of the notable, notable policy changes are from the new sign code to our existing sign code, I don't intend to touch on all these topics. I just add them here for bullets for your consideration. And if you have specific, if you or the public have specific questions about these things, I can certainly go into more detail in terms of what they mean. But the bulleted list in front of you are what we deemed as kind of being a significant departure from how the existing sign code deals with signs in various ways. So since you reviewed the full draft in November, I wanted to point out some of these changes that we made. We did move all of the temporary sign, the provisions. Those kind of followed at a list format, similar to our existing sign code. And we moved those into a table. Hopefully it's a little bit more digestible and easier to read. Circling back to the John Baker review, our contracted attorney, he did note a few instances where there was possibility of commercial speech actually exceeding allowances for non-commercial speech. And so that's a no-no in today's environment. And so we did have to make some adjustments to the size allowances and in some cases, the number allowances to our temporary signs. So I don't have exactly every specific sign type of the temporary signs, but in effect, what the draft in front of you does is that it ensures that for every commercial type of temporary sign, there's also allowances for non-commercial speech along those lines. And that's, in the new legal environment, that's just something that cities are really going to have to live with and embrace and be okay with. And that's okay. Expression, for the most part, is good. So yeah. Electronic changeable copy dwell time. This was a, this was a clarification that in the previous draft of the sign ordinance, the existing sign code establishes its dwell times not just by changeable copy and electronic graphic display. It also actually has a stipulation that the changeable copy signs must be 10 words or less. And the researcher, the reasoning behind that is that back when those amendments were made in 2006, actually is when the city updated its electronic sign standards. And the research reflects this today as well. It's just that more, longer messages or messages with more text, more words, have a higher propensity of driver distraction or concerns about public safety for the traveling public. And so the city adopted those standards in 2006. We attempted, attempted to present, carry those same considerations forward in our November draft. But we, because we were striving to create less complexity, we omitted that component. But it turns out that component is actually fairly important in terms of how that standard was originally adopted. So we added that back in. And so it would be changeable copy 10 words or less. So shorter messages are subject to that eight seconds. The longer messages and graphics would be reduced to 10 minutes, likely, like we previously talked about. In essence, what that decision point was in 2006 is it reflected a compromise in, in terms of trying to maintain, you know, of trying to maintain, you know, control of public safety to a degree. Again, traffic safety being the most important thing, but also have some allowances for shorter dwell times for more limited messages, which are used by private and the public actors as well. So billboard electronic conversion, that was one additional update since your, since your review in November. And I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but basically what it had to do with is when it had, it's a connection point to non-conformity standards for signs. When you increase the size of the cabinet of a existing billboard, that is in effect violating non-conformity considerations because you're increasing the size of it, you're expanding it. And so what we, there was some discussion at the council level that there should be mechanisms to allow for electronic conversion of our four existing billboards in Bloomington. So in effect, what we did is we created an exception for the conversion of existing billboards to electronic. So that's, that's in the draft. Those are the main updates. Otherwise, the draft for the most part reflects what you saw in November. There's, you know, little tweaks here and there, but I just, that's kind of the bigger items. So at, at Planning Commission last time, there was a request in order to provide, we provided some of this adroitely as well as just in the text of our staff report, but the Planning Commission requested this, that we provide a summary table of dwell times and electronic sign standards for various communities. So dwell time is a big, certainly a big piece of that. I will say that some cities have different standards for billboards, you know, and other aspects of their code separate from their sign ordinance. So we did try to capture those in those communities, but acknowledge that it's possible that some of the cities studied may have billboard standards that we did not catch. But this is more focused on sign ordinances, but although for cities, we were aware of separate billboard standards, we did include that in, in how this is reflected. But this is just a sampling of 14 cities. It gives you, you know, different things to look at. One thing I would note is that while some cities have very minimal dwell times, some of those cities also really limit the size of, that electronic signs can be. Some of them have proportionality requirements stating that electronic signs can only be a certain proportion of a freestanding sign, for example. And so it's kind of easy to look apples to apples at the dwell time alone without seeing this other stuff that's happening kind of behind the curtain, like St. Louis Park, for example. I don't want to pick on them. Three seconds, that's a very low dwell time. They also have very strong limitations about where electronic signs can be and how big they can be. They had, they're one of those cities that has a proportionality, for example. So just wanted to point that out. And then just for a summary aspect, as far as what this draft reflects for electronic signs, again, what we're talking about is a max 150 square foot size, a dwell time of limited text, eight seconds, graphics and larger text, 10 minutes, a buffer of residential, to residential uses of 100 feet, and then a nighttime restriction when located within 150 feet of residential uses. So that's what the draft says. Looking at this a different way, this is kind of the environment, regulatory environment about just specific to dwell times right around Bloomington. So you see a very big range, like I've talked about before. You have a couple of cities that are at 60 minutes, which is a significant amount of time, Eden Prairie at 20 minutes, and then you have a collection of cities, Savage at 20 minutes, and then you have Burnsville, Eagan, Richfield, the MAC property that have lower dwell times. And in some cases allow lower dwell times through what's called an enhanced dynamic display permit or other mechanisms that basically incentivize, you know, certain activities or actions on the part of applicants, either by reducing signage or locating signage in order to gain lower dwell times. But yeah, those are, those are kind of the numbers. I state that because people drive on the roads, they walk on the streets or they say, why is it different right there, but it's not right there? And the reason is because local jurisdictions have authority over this and they regulate it all differently. You will hear people talk about, you know, certain federal standards or state standards. And that's not to discredit those things, but it's not a preemption type issue where a standard is set and then local jurisdictions can't regulate. Cities have the right to regulate this issue and many do. And once again, similar to 2006 or 1996, the city will have to make a decision about where it wants to go. And again, just thinking about that balance between expression and then traffic safety, you know, it's, it's kind of the, the balance there. So we've done a fair amount of public engagement as part of this process. We've engaged a lot with internal partners because again, as I've, as I kind of mentioned, that signs touch all different areas of the city code. It touches all of our different departments too. You know, election signs, park, park signs, building addressing with, you know, public safety professionals. There's just a lot of different things. Our environmental health staff runs our temporary sign permit process. And then as I mentioned, the traffic staff. So there's a lot of different players in this. On the external side, we've done a number of surveys with other cities. We've surveyed our sign installers. That work was all done kind of earlier last year. But since that time, we've reached out directly to a lot of trade associations that have an interest in signage. You can see some of their logos there on the left. And then similar to other long-range planning projects, we've had a consistent online engagement presence. We have had some engagement through that as well and we tried to be diligent about providing project updates on that page. And then since that time, thankfully, we're happy when people reach out to us and want to talk to us about our draft codes. We've had a few meetings directly with people and we appreciate the feedback that they've provided us. And so that, that's helpful. We have received some correspondence. We've gotten five letters on the draft sign code. The staff report tried to provide a summary and kind of just general considerations from a staff perspective about kind of the things that some of these parties are asking for. Walzer Toyota inquiring about the number of signs on parking structures, Clear Channel Outdoor, interested in the ability for billboard digital conversion. Again, I think the new code might lay that issue to rest. I think it does lay that issue to rest, but just want to note that. They did make some recommendations about sign brightness and then there is some request to reduce electronic sign dwell times. And I, on this point, Clear Channel operates in the billboard space and I do want to note the sign code does have different standards. It's a flat 10 minutes, not, not a eight seconds for reduced amounts of text. And so that's also a consideration about the size of those signs and that's a carryover from the previous, the existing sign code, which currently is 20 minutes. But the considerations that go into that have to do with the sign size, the volume of traffic that are seeing those and the travel speeds that they're operating at. As far as Kraus Anderson, had a good meeting with them. They had five issues or was, it might've been six, five issues that they identified. Temporary signs for commercial promotions, you know, this is an area, if you read their letter, something that I think we can be a little bit more flexible and creative about in terms of expanding the, the day's allowance based on the number of tenants. If it's of interest to the Planning Commission, I'll certainly wait till later if requested. But if it's of interest to the Planning Commission on that issue, I think I have a concept of something that could get closer to what I think Kraus Anderson is looking for. We might not be in perfect alignment on the number of days, but we're getting closer. The maximum individual building sign size, that is a notable policy change from the existing code, actually establishing a maximum for an individual sign. Building signage allowance in the Class Five sign district, so that's our mixed use zoning districts. The maximum monument or pylon sign size, the cap, and then electronic sign size and dwell times as well, is in, is an area of interest for them. And fast signs, and I know some of those folks are here tonight, so I shouldn't speak for them more than I already have, so forgive me. But Fast Signs also provided a letter. They are a local sign installer. They had an inquiry about the electronic sign dwell time. They, they had an interesting consideration about varied dwell times within an individual sign, if you vary the message within the actual electronic message, which was creative, but I think difficult from a regulatory perspective. Varied, they did make a comment about the varied dwell times in terms of the quantity of text and they had a question about feather flags. Feather flags are permitted in the existing sign ordinance, I believe, and certain, and for sure are in the new sign code. So I think that issue is likely resolved as well. And then finally later, earlier today, the Minneapolis Regional Chamber also submitted a letter that was emailed to you. I think you might have a printed copy of it. Thank you, Elliot. That they also recommend reducing the dwell time on digital billboards to eight seconds. So in terms of next steps, you know, following the hearing that you will hold here this evening, should you make a recommendation tonight, we would have to hold a public hearing at the City Council. If you were to take action tonight, that would be on February 26th. If the council moves to adopt a new sign standards or the new sign code, we then would have to go through a process of updating a lot of our permitting processes and kind of informational materials on our website. We have a lot of stuff out there on our existing sign code. And then finally, the thing that I put in bold is just that with, when you're replacing a kind of a policy that is as complex or expansive as something like signs, when you're talking about changing the methodology, methodologies by which how signs are calculated, doing a lot of new different things in terms of a departure from the existing code, I think it's prudent in this case to have, to commit to the public and commit to property owners and businesses to do a look, a review one year after the fact. And what we would do basically over the course of that year is track the various sign permits we reviewed and take special note of instances where if we had any difficulties with the new provisions in terms of inconsistency with the desired signage outcomes or proposals of the property owners, we'd be able to provide you and the City Council that information in some form. And then at that time, if, you know, if directed by Planning Commissioner or Council, if we had needed to make some adjustments, we certainly could do that. So I do want to highlight that. With that, I do have a recommended motion language and I'm happy to take questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Johnson. This is a public hearing, so we'll go through our normal process, starting with questions for staff. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Johnson, my question is related to the digital conversion of billboards. And the recommendation is around a certain number of feet from residential property. Was there a discussion around the proximity to hotels, given that there are a lot of them on the 494 corridor, directly abutting billboards?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Albrecht, so there wasn't discussion specifically about that. Again, we have four legally non-conforming billboards in Bloomington. The new sign code does not propose to expand that allowance in terms of adding new ones. So the existing policy and if the draft policy were adopted for is kind of the number. But we didn't look at hotels. I would, I would share that what kind of governs, hotels currently aren't a use from a proximity standpoint in our current sign code that warrant special consideration with respect to the operation of digital signs. So that would be a new policy if we were to look at that. The other thing I was going to share is that the city's lighting ordinance, so you'll actually sometimes see some cross references in the sign code to the lighting ordinance. And the reason for that is that our brightness restrictions are actually not in the sign code, they're in the lighting ordinance. And the consideration of those brightness elements, there is reductions in brightness when in proximity to residential uses, but there's currently no consideration for hotels in our lighting ordinance. Yep.
Mr. Johnson, I have a question. Going back to the billboards and you mentioned that the, the last time this came before us, it was not on the table to allow them to convert to digital and now it sounds like they are. And I believe you said that was at the wishes of the council. So I just want to clarify that point. Some of the things you presented before us were doing for legal reasons. It sounds like this may not be a legal reason that we are allowing to that digital conversion. Is that correct?
Yeah, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Cookton. So with respect to the legal analysis, this is really getting into the weeds of non-conformity, but you could envision that you could be not expanding the actual width or height of a billboard, but because the cabinet size has to increase, technically it is a physical expansion. And so we as a staff, before we even explored this matter kind of more diligently, were unsure in terms of what state non-conformity standards would say about the conversion of an electronic sign. So whether or not, we, we were kind of operating under the assumption, the potential assumption that there could be merits for our conversion if you're just going based off the, the standard state statute. And so we looked into that further. That's kind of where you caught us, that we didn't think you could do it because it is a physical expansion, if you're talking about substantially equivalent under the non-conformity law. And so when, as we were discussing that with City Council, I think there was, and I don't want to state that they didn't take a formal vote on it or a separate motion, like we want to allow for the conversion of digital billboards. It's just there was some discussion on it. Staff interpreted that discussion to be that we should look at it. So we changed it in the draft. It certainly does not have to go forward with that. It's just we were trying to read what the policy direction was we were being given.
Mr. Toski.
Thanks, Chair. Commissioners, I can just add a little bit to the, the state non-conformity law does specifically allow cities to allow expansions of non-conformity by ordinance. So that's what you see in the draft ordinance. So it is, it's allowing an expansion to digital displays, provided it meets all the other requirements of the ordinance. So there's a maximum size, there's a length, brightness, all those different things will have to meet, but it would be allowed without violating our non-conformity section. So just to add some context to that, thanks.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify on, got two questions, but to clarify on the billboard, regardless of the number of words on it, the graphics, it's agnostic of that, it would only be allowed to change every 10 minutes. Is that correct?
Yeah, Chair. Commissioner Goldsman, that's correct. If the new code was adopted, currently the standard is 20 minutes.
Okay. If I may ask.
Please.
Thank you. One thing that you didn't cover tonight that we've talked about in previous meetings is really the allowance of multiple sign types on the front of properties, multi-tenant properties, i.e. like a strip mall. Can you talk a little bit about the historical discussions around different sign types being allowed versus currently they're not allowed?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Goldsman, so I can't, I don't know if it was within the 1996 version of the code that it dates all the way back to, or if it has been a subsequent change since then. I don't know that off the top of my head, but basically what you will see in some sign ordinances of certain communities, that they will require uniformity of sign type when mounted on a multi-tenant building so that they don't have kind of varying aesthetics of their sign types on a, on a given building. And then you will see other cities that don't regulate that. We had this discussion with you, of course, but we also had this discussion and the reason that it was continued to not include that requirement, whereas our existing sign code does include uniformity of sign construction today, is that City Council did provide clear policy guidance in that regard based on their discussion to, to eliminate that. And I think I had a six-point plan as to why staff thinks that that's wise. I don't know if I can recite all six points, but I can tell you is that in order to regulate uniformity of construction, basically you have to have a, what's currently called as a uniform sign design plan, but you have to establish a regulatory mechanism, an approval on a property that sign, that staff can use and that disallows sign installers from installing certain sign types. So that's one piece is just added regulatory complexity and cost of going through that process. It also adds time to establish those. The second piece of it was just that some business logo types or messages don't match up well with channel construction types. They, they literally need a cabinet and under our existing sign code, cab, the cabinet component of a sign is limited to 25% of the full sign area. And so basically it doesn't translate well to certain businesses. One of the other considerations that we talked about at City Council is that those sign types, just by the nature of their construction, tend to be quite a bit more expensive than cabinet sign types. So staff had equity concerns about that in terms of, is it really a valuable or legitimate use of, I guess, government power, for lack of a better term, to be dictating what types of signs businesses would have to install on their building? There was a couple of other ones. I'm failing to forget my six-point plan. I wouldn't be a good elected official, I guess, but I don't know if I'm.
Equity?
No, yeah, we talked about that. Yes. But yeah, so I kind of presented those facts to you and the City Council before and they agreed to move forward without that. We recognize that in some instances, there is some potential harms of the, you know, aesthetic that can occur, but some of those things can be more preferential than subjective, say. Is that a fair summary?
Any other questions for staff?
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of questions. So the Kraus Anderson letter, I mean, I've read this point and understand that for buildings with multiple tenants, I don't know, probably three or more, five or more, the update could be too restrictive. So what is the plan then? It sounds like you guys are maybe still working on something, or is that finalized? And is there a point at which that might need to be reviewed in the future? Can you just explain that further?
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Curry, so what we did is we had some meetings with Kraus, and we have a good relationship with Kraus, and so we had a very good open dialogue, and they expressed some concerns about how some of the new standards could impact some of their multi-tenant retail properties in Bloomington, and I value their feedback. On what we tried to do in the staff report is to try and provide a summary of kind of where staff is kind of more in alignment maybe with what they're requesting, and I think that focuses more on the temporary sign proposal. And then what they expressed elsewhere is, you know, concern about maximum size of freestanding signs not along the highway of 100 square feet. And I do have some examples of kind of sign areas of some different signs in town, if you want to take a look at them, there's an extra slide. But in addition to that, also that on our building signs, they have some centers that are in, would be in the new class three sign district, which is our B2, our general commercial and industrial areas. But they also have a property located in that zone B4, which is one of the city's mixed-use zoning districts. And one of the concepts the ordinance has for building signs is that it's a slightly lower allowance for sign area in a mixed-use environment than a general commercial environment, more auto-oriented type development, if that makes sense. And so we, we recognize those things, and some of, some of the properties that are zoned mixed-use today, you know, may be envisioned via district plan or the city's comprehensive plan to take on a new form as time goes on and redevelopment occurs, but might have a more auto-oriented site today. I mean, that's, that's kind of the nature of planning, right, is that you're going to have restrictions or plans that don't perfectly marry up with the existing condition. What I've tried to express to Kraus Anderson and others is that A, all the existing signs you have, if the city were to adopt this ordinance, are going to be legally nonconforming. And so as long as you replace them in a substantially equivalent way, you can continue to have bigger signs. B, some of the signs that exist in the community actually exceed the existing sign code. And that was, that happened through PD flexibility, or variances, or other tools that are still available to property owners today. And so don't automatically assume, in other words, that all the signs that exist in Bloomington today meet the existing sign code, because that's not true. There has been variances and other things that have been done. And then the other, I mean, the other thing, I didn't want to make a big deal out about this, but the environment of signs, just from the 1990s to right now, is just very different. Everyone has a computer in their pocket with a map app that tells them where every single business is. And so it's not to devalue the need for commercial messages. Commercial messages are obviously very important for businesses to be successful, but the environments, the regulatory environments of the 1990s is just different in light, today, and different in light of what technology we all have, most of us have, and the ability to go to those properties and navigate to those properties quite easily and learn about businesses. So we're trying to create a sign ordinance for the next 20 years. But, so I recognize that, you know, some of the allowances might be off from the perspective of Kraus Anderson, who's an important retail property owner in Bloomington. But that's also part of the reason why we're committed to this one-year look back, is because we want to actually put this into, into action and see how it performs. So that was probably a little more than you were bargaining for, sorry.
Yes, thank you. So I guess going back to the multi-tenant temporary sign situation.
Yeah.
I mean, I think one of the things the city council actually asked us about specifically was small businesses, and if they're temporary signs for new businesses coming into the city, we obviously want to be as supportive as possible. So I guess are we a long ways off from what they're thinking is appropriate and what we have, what we are proposing? Or are we relatively close?
Yeah.
In terms of temporary sign specifically?
Chair, Commissioner Curry, where I'd say we're more close, or where we are aligned is that we think, we agree with Kraus, that larger multi-tenant sites should be, consideration should be made for those sites for more days of temporary signage to be allowed. And keep in mind with how it's set up, today, the existing sign code tracks both days and occurrences. We're getting rid of the occurrences. It's just, it's extraneous, it's over, it's not necessary, in my view. So what we're going to is just a day standard. And the way that this is set up is that, you know, you might have five, you know, five tenants who all have banners on their tenant space, and it's not just because there's five of them, if it's on the same day, it still counts as one day. So I just want to make that point clear. Where, so we're in, we're in alignment that multi-tenant sites like South Town, which has over 30 tenants, that's unique, right? That's not common to have that many tenants. There should be more days. So we, you know, I, this is just, this is just track changed of the existing sign code. You know, it's an alternative proposal, it's an option B, if you will, where staff, I think the Kraus letter suggested 240 days, which is well over half the year. Staff would be supportive of looking at half the year, 180 days. And I think part of that, too, is just based on the experience that the existing provisions that exist today have not been limiting. That's not the feedback we've gotten, that, that today's ordinance is absolutely unreasonable, and today's ordinance has stronger restrictions than what this is that I'm showing you here.
Sure.
So we're in alignment that consideration should be paid for more multi-tenant, for larger multi-tenant sites, it's just I think we're a little off on the days, but I think, I see that as a minor discrepancy.
Okay, that's great. Then I guess my only other, I guess it's, it's been a concern, or was a concern last time, is just electronic signs facing residential. Like we've got 100-foot distance with a night, nighttime restriction. I mean, is there anything stopping somebody from putting up a sign 100 feet from somebody's living room that just directs right into their living room?
Yeah, so Chair, Commissioner Curry, it'd have to be 101 feet to do that. 100 foot is, you can't be within 100 feet. But this is a policy choice that the city will have to make, in that we saw cities that actually require the signs to be extinguished, turned off, if they're within 150 feet. That's kind of our current orientation standard. So if you're between 101 and 150 feet, you know, and the distances are different in other cities, some of them are only 50, or some of them have different distances. But the point is they suggest extinguish the sign during the night. A few other cities we saw said extinguish them or make them static, meaning they don't change. And the reason being is that it's the changes, it's the changing light and the constant changing messages that basically create more of the nuisance to a residential property than just a static, and keeping in mind that we have brightness limitations when closer to residential. It's, that's kind of more the issue, is the changing nature of the message. The draft has, allows them to stay on, but they have to be static after 9:00 PM, from 9:00 to 7:00, 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Okay.
The city could, sorry, the city could suggest that they just be extinguished, but, and maybe a consideration for the council, or just, it does require more enforcement on the part of city staff at nighttime, which is not typical staff operating hours. And so doing, like we do lighting inspections, we do sign brightness inspections, you're adding an additional potential nighttime activity from a code enforcement perspective, because some people will decide not to comply.
Have there been any areas in the city that planning's looked at that have highlighted any potential specific neighboring uses where that could be a concern, such as, I don't know, I think maybe Penn Avenue, where you've got industrial properties on one side, and then I think residential on the other side? Is that, have you guys looked at that at all?
Yes, Chair, Commissioner Curry, it has come up. And that's, I mean, that in effect is why we have a sign brightness limitation, because all, typically all these signs have dimmers on them, and if left unregulated, some of, not all, but some property owners will turn them up to be quite bright. And we've had issues with interior building lighting and other uses. And this also relates to the discussion about a maximum sign size, too. It also informs that, because some of the experiences we've had in that regard relate to that as well. But yes, that's why it's just important to be diligent about sign brightness and how it can impact residential uses. But most of the complaints we get are not about changing messages or those types of things. I mean, there's not many electronic signs right in residential neighborhoods. I can think of a few occasions with place of assembly and things, but it's more brightness issues and how light is thrown or cast right at residential properties. So it's more intensity.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? And Mr. Johnson, I just want to clarify for the planning commission, the slide that's in front of us is not what's in the application.
That's, thank you for that clarification, that's correct. This is a staff's audible, or option B, to look at if the planning commission is in support of expanding allowances for temporary, or temporary signs for commercial promotions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, in this case, the city is the applicant, so we've heard enough perhaps from Mr. Johnson for a few minutes. And I will then open the public hearing, and we'll follow the same rules we talked about with item number one, but we do welcome that public testimony, so anyone who would like to come up. If you haven't signed in already, please do so. If you have signed in, state your name so we know who you are, and we'll take your testimony. Both microphones work, so come on up.
Well, good evening. My name's Ken Vingi, I'm with Kraus Anderson, and...
I think...
Hello.
Yeah, we got you.
Okay. And I don't, I've been around for a long time. I grew up in Bloomington, worked in Bloomington for 35 years, either worked or managed properties for 35 years in Bloomington, been involved with a lot of different organizations, but the Bloomington Chamber, I still call it the Bloomington Chamber, but worked with them over the 35 years, and been in front of city councils and planning commissions, and worked with Nick and Glenn, actually through the Bloomington Chamber, we would meet with Glenn every month on our public policies committee, and that was before COVID, and going over things that were going on with the city. So I've been a, kind of a spokesperson and following along from the business community on what goes on. And with Kraus Anderson, we do have a dozen properties in Bloomington, and have for a number of years, going back to South Town Center and Clover Center. Clover's from the 1950s, and South Town, of course, 1960. And we have a number of properties in different zoning districts from B2, B4, C3, C3, C4, and C5, and now with this new sign ordinance, I'd be classes three and classes five. So Kraus Anderson, where we are, as Nick said, maybe grandfathered in, based on some of the comprehensive plans we already have, and also through the PDs that we have. But what I really want to do is, as I read through this, is what's reasonable for the business community and for the city? And so that's how I approached it. And so one of the first things that I looked at or caught my eye was the temporary signage. And I had a little different understanding than what the current code says, because of how we've applied it over the years at various properties. But for instance, you know, a property like South Town, it's not unreasonable that you're going to have a multiple, multitude of tenants that are going to be moving in and out throughout the course of a year. For one example was, we had Hancock Fabrics move out of the one end cap, and then we ended up leasing half of it to Petco, and then we relocated Schuler's into the other half of that. Then now that Schuler's was gone from what we called our Newtown section, we ended up splitting that in half, and we put in Guitar Center and five below. So right there, you know, you'd have four tenants that are all looking for their 60-day signage, that's 240 days, just for four tenants in a property of the size of South Town. Not to mention, you know, somebody like Party City wanting to have their Halloween sign up, you know, or maybe TJ Maxx, or Famous World wanting to do a sidewalk sale, or some other tenant moving in, like, you know, The Joint or something like that. So I just feel that the, the number of days that are needed for temporary signage should be enhanced, and Nick had that slide up there. And maybe if you could add another section into there and get to the larger section having 240 days, I think that would be more adequate to handle us situations like South Town or Valley West may have. The other sec, item that I wanted to cover was the size of the signage. Now, as you read through it, based on the different classes and that, but you could get up to 250 square feet. Well, Kohl's has a sign that's 193, and, you know, it looks good there, and also note that it's kind of a two-story building, so that, that adds to, you know, how the sign looks and appears. But Kohl's is only five letters. How do I, you got it? Now, if you go to, say, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, you know, now you're talking 18 characters. Oops. Oh. There we go. Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, you know, now, now you're talking a large, a larger sign, and that one, well, it says right up there, 400 square feet. So obviously well above the 250, that would be the new max for the sign criteria. But again, you know, that's almost a two-story facade to that, and, you know, it looks very well. And it is so important for the retail tenants to be able to have the signage that is visible to the customers, and in some cases, you know, passersby's. For Herburgers, now, as you know, that, that Herburger building's coming down. Actually is being demoed right now, and, but to just show, you know, the Herburger sign with the rose, you're talking at six, over 600 square feet. So again, two-story building, you know, near the freeway, again, it doesn't look, you know, it looks appropriate for, for the area, and we don't know what exactly is going to go in that area again, but I'm sure it's going to be, you know, something large, and they are going to be looking for definitely more than a 250-foot sign for that area.
Mr. Vingi, I've got your pastime, so I'll ask you to work on wrapping it up here if you could, please.
Okay. And then just as far as another slide, you know, I'm talking South Town, but you have Valley West, and you have Kelp Foods, you know, throughout the city. And again, look at their sign, and that's 326 square feet. So I, just trying to be reasonable on what that limit is, and I feel that 250 is way too low. And, you know, you have other signs in the cities that I'm going to, I'm sure are similar in size. Okay, I think my letter speaks for the rest of it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, planning commissioners. My name is Matthew Wyland, I'm with Clear Channel Outdoor. We own and operate the only billboards in the city of Bloomington. First, certainly want to start off, I think, in your city staff, Nick's been great to work with, certainly recognize this is a huge and complex undertaking you guys are doing, certainly appreciate some of the comments that we've submitted that have been incorporated. We are excited and would like the opportunity to upgrade and modernize the billboards we have in town. Really, the only issue, the thing I have to discuss is the dwell times. Appreciate, currently they're at 20 minutes, you're recommending 10, what we're requesting is eight seconds. Eight seconds is our industry, industry standard for dwell times on billboards. This is based on safety studies by the federal highway administration. So the federal government allows it, the state government allows it, but as Nick said, it is subject to local rules. Safety is our top priority in operating these. We know if they didn't operate safe, or if we didn't operate them safely, we couldn't have them. The first digital signs that we put in were back in 2006 in Menetanka, so 18 years ago, we've been operating safely. We currently have 82 digital faces in 22 communities, all with eight-second dwell times. The reason, the, one of the ways we operate these safely, if you look at any of these boards, they have a webcam sitting out in front of them that points back. The webcam's not only proof to our advertisers what we're advertising, but we're always monitoring those boards, so if there ever was any issues with them, we could remotely shut them off, and there hasn't been. Again, we've been operating for 18 years. Around the community right now, we have them in Burnsville, we have them in Minneapolis, or in Eagan, around your community, so you can see how they operate. We really don't want to have them any brighter, operate any differently than the other printed signs you see in the area. Our billboards are located in good industrial, commercial corridors, which we also take into account. The main reasons we want to upgrade our digital boards, number one, it's where our industry's going, it allows a lot more flexibility for advertisers, they can change their message during the day. Number two, it allows us to give way more opportunities... Number two, it allows us to give way more opportunities for local advertisers in your community without adding more billboards. Number three, it allows us to further our commitment to the communities we operate in. Every community we're in where we have digital boards, we allow, or we provide public messaging. Cities use it for a variety of things, from their events, their community centers, to public education. In addition to what we give to cities, we partner with law enforcement, emergency management on public service. We're one of the fastest ways to get an Amber Alert out, for instance, or we partner with the FBI with their fugitive, fugitive most wanted type stuff. And we strategically partner with nonprofits. So we've certainly demonstrated we can operate these safely, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity or your consideration on our request at eight seconds. And I think last thing Nick pointed out, you know, we got the support of the Minneapolis Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Recognize we do a lot of work with them and partner with them on a lot of things and certainly appreciate their support for this request as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all the other folks here at City Hall are city staff, and I don't see anyone online. So I will look for a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second to close that public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move into discussion. Lots to unpack here. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. To be honest, I kind of, you know, Cross Anderson's testimony about the temporary signage, I think is important. And I don't know, I mean, I don't, I think given the state of where South Town is at today, I mean, I think we just condemned one of the buildings, right? So I think we should probably put some more consideration into their, and I don't, I mean, the math is beyond me, it's like multiple levels, but how many days, like tenant days of temporary signage can be allowed on multi-tenant property like that? So I think we should take a closer look at that.
Further discussion? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I also was moved by the Cross Anderson testimony, particularly around the square footage of signage. I know some companies, I'm sure, I can think of one grocery chain actually has very specific standards in which they use to come into communities or not. And I'm not sure if signage would detract from a business deciding to be in Bloomington based on have, the requirement to have a smaller sign. But I would be just concerned generally with that idea. Are we going to limit business growth for the city of Bloomington because we have a strict signage, square footage? That's all I have to say about that one.
Okay. Commissioner Goldsman.
I don't, I don't know which ones I should start with, there's so many. Okay, so the first thing I wrote down is just acknowledging Senior Planner Johnson's work and the huge effort that this has taken on. We've been talking about this for a long time, so I want to just acknowledge that this is great work and thank you. All right. I also, on that topic, just want to make sure that, acknowledge that this is one of the projects that I have been most impressed with by the outreach. We've had other projects come to us as a commission that we've always been like, we could have done a better job. And I don't feel that way with this ordinance in front of us. I feel like we've done an excellent job of reaching out to property owners, to other cities, to residents. We've talked about it in, in the commission meetings, so I just feel like we've done all of the homework we needed to do here. A few things. I, okay, on the square footage topic, I'm actually okay with the signage as proposed. And the reason I look at that as being okay is if a larger sign is needed, there are venues to get approval for that larger sign. So there's signage plans for plan developments, there are, you know, conditional use acceptances there within our process. There's variance, opportunities there. So I look at that as being an okay venue for a sign that is that large and for that purpose. And to Commissioner Albrecht's comment, I think a small business or a local business isn't going to be needing a sign that large to promote themselves. Does that make sense? Like, if I'm opening up a business for myself as a small local company, it's probably going to be a smaller scale than 250 square feet, just because 250 square feet is huge. So I'm okay with that max side, size, knowing that there are other venues to make accommodations. The other thing that I have written down is, and I bring this up every time, is mixed sign types. And I understand the reasoning that we're getting rid of the requirement to have the same sign type on our commercial strip malls, for lack of a better name. But I also, when I drive by the one that we have in town that has mixed sign types, it looks cluttered. It looks janky. It doesn't have that polished look. That said, I would recommend that the, I believe the Port Authority has a project in their purview in their work plan that is addressing commercial node viability and project to lift those commercial nodes up. And I would ask staff within the Port Authority to look at signage as a part of that package. Because I think that could raise the appeal and the vibrancy of those commercial nodes, and maybe it converged the gap between these mixed use or mixed type of signage. I don't know what that would look like, but maybe that would help appease my janky, clunky lookingness of that one that does exist. The last thing that I had written down, there's two more, I'm sorry, I'm getting long-winded. I understand council's comments about the electronic billboards. And I guess I, at first was, I wrote a frowny face on my paper. I wasn't super keen on that at first. As we talk through it, I think I've been swayed to be okay with it. I like the 10 minutes as a first step. Right now, we have, for all intents and purposes, a moratorium. We're now going to open up the door a crack to see if this happens. And then if in a year from now, we, we do a reanalysis and say, you know, we, we're not getting any conversion because no one can make the business case that the 10 minutes doesn't get the ROI to build the billboard, maybe that would be justification to bring it down. That's a question I guess I'd have for the signage teams is what is the ROI for building a new sign, getting the revenue from that sign, and how often it needs to turn over, you know, from a dollars and cents perspective? 10 minutes might not be enough turnover to pay for the signage itself. So are we still restricting it because we can't get the revenue from it fast enough? The other thing about billboards that somewhat bother me is we talk about signage in front of housing or residences. One of our billboards that we have in, well, no, that one's in Richfield. Never mind, I'll take that back. The last thing I would say is around temporary signs. So I, I do think that some flexibility on temporary signs is prudent. I like the removal of the occurrence, mainly because a lot of our commercial, our neighborhood commercial notes, they're going through facelifts of their facade, and when they do that, they have to take all the signs off. And they put up temporary signs as they put on new siding or new brickwork or whatever they're doing the facade on. And, and there has to be some flexibility. Obviously, they're doing it to enhance their property, improve the commercial node, and that temporary sign is just that, it's temporary until they make it look great again. So those are my comments for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. I'll go with some comments here as well. In regards to the electric billboards, I must say I'm just not a huge fan of them. It's not, they're not only seen when you're driving, some of us can see them from their house every night when they go to bed, and it switches in one of our neighboring cities every eight seconds. And I must say, it's annoying. Doesn't stop me from sleeping, but I notice it. We have a lot of hotels that are very, that are quite vertical in the city, and our hotel guests are seeing these billboards change. And I think that's a, it's just not as good of an experience as it could be. And so I'm not super inclined to loosen up regulations that allow for our four billboards in Bloomington to be converted to electronic. In fact, I'm a little disappointed of the change that we've seen since the last time we saw this. I was happy that we weren't going to have more or any electric billboards in Bloomington, and that has changed, and it may prevent me from supporting this tonight. I'm not sure yet, but it might. I'm not a fan of that. And, well, that's enough of that. The next thing is the, the dwell time of those. I'm, I'm in favor of the longer dwell time, basically for the same thing I just said. People are trying to sleep at night and you can see these in, I think a longer dwell time is prudent. And I must say, I also drive past them every morning. I take the highway to work, and I have to say, it is distracting when it changes, and I can appreciate there's been scientific studies done and whatever, but when it changes, I look at it. And I'm in the, I'm in the view of one of these electronic billboards for longer than eight seconds. Every morning when I drive it, it changes at least once, and it does take my eyes off the road. I've never driven off the road because of it, but it, it does catch my eye, I must say. And so I'm in favor of a longer dwell time. At a very minimum, at least a dwell time where it's not going, where it's less likely to change, where it's not guaranteed to change while you're in front of it. You know, if you're driving 60 miles an hour, you're always going to be in front of a billboard for a certain amount of time, and I wish it was longer at least than that. So it's, it's not going to change every time you drive past it, but I don't know, I'm fine with staff's proposal of a longer dwell time there, mostly for our hotel and some of our residential residents and guests. Regarding the promotion signs, I'm, I like staff's recommendation on this one. I used to take the bus every day to work, and I had a bus stop that was on 494 in the city of Richfield that I would stand and wait for the bus and look back to the city of Bloomington. And I remember one of the longest going out of business sales I can ever remember, and that temp sign being there forever. And it was just, it, it became a bit of a visual nuisance, in my opinion, and the fact that this was five years ago, and I still remember that very yellow and black sign, it made an impact on me. And I, I'm not really in favor of loosening it up. I appreciate we, we don't want to hamper business and all of those things, but I think staff has reached a fine compromise, certainly will allow them. But I, I, I'm not in favor of 180 days. I think that's too long for a banner. I, I don't think that's a banner anymore. And frankly, banners aren't the, the quality of a normal sign. So after 180 days, they probably start looking a little tattered and, and everything else, and we're hoping they take them down after 180 days, but maybe it turns into 250 and that sign's getting even a little more battered and faded, and I'm just not in favor of it. I like what staff has proposed here. So whether or not I'm in favor of this application, I'm not, I'm not totally sure. Commissioner Turner-Curry.
Thank you, Chair. All very valid and great points by everybody here, I think. I, my mind has actually like changed twice in the last two minutes. So originally, I thought it would be smart to actually have a shorter dwell time because that might make billboard signage more accessible to smaller businesses. But, you know, in recognition of all the hotels in the city and my concern about residents being annoyed by electronic signage, I think we probably, I support the current 10-minute time limit that we've got. I mean, I was thinking five or three minutes potentially because you're going to drive by a billboard quicker than that. Let's see, in terms of the temporary signage, I think it's a valid point that you just don't want the signs to stay up for an extended period of time. I apologize, I don't know the code well enough to understand as to whether this, you know, the tenant days, how that affects the length of time that a sign can be put up, but maybe there should be some consideration put into how long the sign can be left up for. I mean, I do, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, most businesses do not survive one year, right? So in terms of retail, the first 60 days or whatever it is are super important. So I certainly don't want our city code to limit the ability for a small business to be able to have any signage. So I, I don't know if there's a way to strike a balance there, maybe we already have, but I guess based on what I'm hearing, I don't know if we have. I don't, I'm not confident. And then the last thing I'll say is, I guess I'm still concerned about electronic signage facing residential in more residential neighborhoods within the city. So I think, I don't think I'm going to support passing this tonight. I think there are some things that could be looked at a little bit further, and I just like to understand it better before feeling comfortable with what we're looking at.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Excuse me, one question that I have. Is this presentation going to council as a full presentation or will, what is the plan on that?
This will be at the city council on February 26th in a normal manner. Will you be giving the same presentation, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah. Chair, Commissioner Goldsman, so I would likely, given the city council agenda environment, probably pare a few things down, but I mean, I'll follow the direction and discussion anywhere they want to take it. One point I would make for your consideration tonight is that staff certainly can make amendments to the draft. It's one, as one of your duties at the advisory board, if there are issues that you specifically want to change in this document, you can do so via motion. And that's the draft that gets presented to city council. Now, staff can certainly provide analysis as to what informed our previous draft, but I just want to emphasize to you, it's not a take it or leave it proposition. No ordinance ever is. That doesn't mean that we can't pause or come back if you want us to study a particular matter, but what I would say is that if you can, please provide staff very clear direction on what needs additional analysis, if that's the route that you want to go. So yeah, I just want to emphasize that if there are matters of discussion that, you know, warrant, you know, side motions or specific, and I don't, I don't want to direct you on how to conduct your meeting, but I just wanted to make the point that staff is ready and able to present the draft ordinance that you put forth.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. One other item I'll note, which I forgot to mention the last time, the, you know, we had a lot of public correspondence, which we do appreciate, and we've, I think, all read through it, and Mr. Johnson did a nice job summarizing it. Generally speaking, I, I, I preferred staff's recommendation over all of them, with the exception of the request from Walz or Toyota, that was basically increasing the number of allowable signs but keeping the square footage allowance. I found that to be a reasonable request as they had proposed it. The rest of them, as I mentioned earlier, I, I preferred staff's recommendation over what was recommended to us. So I think where we're at here, there is a draft ordinance in front of us and a recommended motion, and I think what we could do, but I'll leave it to you all, is we could vote on the draft as it's been proposed to us, either a thumbs up or a thumbs down. If it's a thumbs up, that recommendation goes on to city council. If it's a thumbs down, we could have additional discussion. Is there something we could majorly agree upon that we would rather see? And we could take a vote on an amended draft ordinance. So is there any further discussion or we could look for a motion? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. The only thing that I keep going back to is goal number two of this whole process, which is to increase clarity and to decrease complexity. And. And I too am not a huge fan of digital billboards. I am also very distracted while driving across the river, uh, the digital billboard changing. However, I do want to make Bloomington a less complex place to do business. So whatever that is, whatever that means, um, some sort of similar standard to other communities. Um, and I, Mr. Johnson, would you pull up the slide with the other communities on the... This is, this looks to me like a mess. I'm trying to understand what, where, if you're on the north side of 494, the south side of 494, the east, it would be very difficult to understand what you can do where. And so my perspective is if that is industry standard, that eight seconds, then that's something that I think I'm comfortable with as long as we get to review it in a year. Rather than going to 10 minutes, which I don't see anywhere on here as an example, which is fine, we can do our own thing, absolutely. However, that doesn't necessarily decrease complexity. I'm also, I, thank you, Commissioner Goldsman, for pointing out that there is a sign variance process, um, that the complexity part is where I get hung up, because, um, I want Bloomington to be, Bloomington to be a place where it's easier to do, to get things done. And, uh, having to go through that variance process, though minimal and potentially a staff okay, um, I just am hesitant. It doesn't meet the goal of less complex for people looking to build and do business I am supportive of the, um, the staff recommendation around temporary signage. So I personally would not support the amendment as proposed, but would cement, would, um, would support changes based on what we've talked about tonight.
Chair Cookton, Commissioner Albrecht, can I clarify what the, exactly that last point was? Are you talking about the option B that I showed on a slide?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm clearly understanding you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Goldsman.
No worries. Um, so I like how you brought us back to the beginning, right? What are our goals? And I love the complexity piece, that are we, are we creating complexity? Because we, as a commission, can do that all night long if we wanted to. The thing about the billboards, and that's for me right now, is that the, the big hangup, excuse me, I, I don't think I can get to that eight seconds. Though I don't think 20 minutes is feasible, looking at Edina or Savage, um, or, yeah, Eden Prairie. So to get it to be less complex, I would actually be in more favor, be more favorable to just not allowing electronic billboards. It keeps it simple. Then we don't have to fight about how often they can refresh. Then again, in a year, we can actually have the ROI conversation with the numbers of what makes financial sense to bring these in. You know, if, if it's 10 minutes and that justifies building an electronic, I don't know. I just struggle with, if we put it at 10 minutes, it might not even make financial sense to build. So it's like we're putting a moratorium on it, even though we're not. We're saying, yeah, you can, you can have it, but does it really make sense? So I think it needs more study, we need more time to, to dig into that one further. The other thing too, is there's only four of them. So are we making a mountain out of a molehill? I don't know. But those are my couple of comments.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Goldsman makes a good point. Um, you know, I think I go back to our self-storage conversation that we had, um, where if we narrow the, the lane so much that it's impossible to actually do anything, or actually move forward, then what's the point? And I, I kind of, I, there is a reason why billboards are not allowed to be built in the city of Bloomington, um, and why we have four legally non-conforming, because we don't want any additional billboards, but yet we're discussing having electronic billboards, um, which to me are a bigger nuisance than a freestanding billboard. So I, I kind of agree with that. I think I would be in favor of eliminating the ability to do a digital conversion.
Let me ask a question of the two of you. You know, I, I do agree with you that data-driven decisions are good ones for us to make. We do well with, with data-driven decisions. If we were to, let's just hypothetically say, hold this over till our next meeting to get that data, perhaps that's something Mr. Johnson could work with, um, to get us that data, would you be in a better position to make a decision? Or I'm also hearing you're potentially in favor of not allowing them to begin with. Do you have any thoughts on that? Maybe I'll start with Mr. Johnson. Is that the type of information you could provide in a couple of weeks, or is that not reasonable?
Yeah, Chair, I guess one thing I would indicate with respect to that question is that there is a lot of materials out there on this topic. Um, and there's even some, and helpfully so, there's even some academic papers that summarize a lot of studies about electronic sign dwell times and kind of the impacts they can have on driver distraction and some of those things. My general takeaways from those things is that that community of doing that research has not landed on any one individual standard for what is deemed a safe, um, uh, standard of dwell time for drivers. What they will tell you is that shorter messages are safer than longer messages, that graphics unto themselves can be more distracting than, uh, shorter messages. So more complex messages are less safe than, uh, less complex messages. But they won't land on, I understand that the Federal Highway Administration issued this, uh, order in the early 2000s around the eight seconds. I, I recognize and, uh, respect that, but I think you will not find uniformity of the, the traffic safety community that think that that is a safe standard, or that, um, uh, would propose that for a local jurisdiction. So, um, I'm not, uh, I'm not opposed, or I'm, I'm certainly willing to collect some of this, uh, research for you and transmit it to you and present it in a public setting. We certainly can do that. Uh, but what we've attempted, and what I'm trying to communicate now, is that I don't think, uh, you'll feel fulfilled by, as I have not found fulfilled by, uh, doing this investigation myself in the past. We certainly have engineering and traffic staff here, if you want to talk to them. But I, I've, what I've attempted to communicate to them does reflect a lot of conversations that we've had over this time. And I know, uh, their position is that longer dwell times are safe, or are better than shorter dwell times.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I would also just support just skipping electronic billboards in general. I mean, otherwise just go back and forth on times forever. And I don't know, I guess I just don't see the benefit. So, other than the small business thing that I mentioned about five minutes ago, but yeah, I think we just skip it.
Commissioner Goldsman.
So if I can just surmise that, based on what I'm, I'm hearing, that the commission would recommend to city council to adopt the ordinance, removing the billboard, electronic billboard allowance, and then adding temporary sign allowances, um, as proposed in option B. Is that...
I think that is an optional motion you could make. I will speak for myself in that I don't think I could support the second half of that amendment, but that's just where I'm at. Commissioner Albrecht.
Uh, Mr. Chair, is there a way where you would feel comfortable around temporary signage allowances? As, as, as originally, option A is comfortable for you?
Uh, Mr. Johnson, what is option A again?
Forgive me, let me pull it up.
Forgive me for, for that.
Hopefully this isn't too, uh, brain damaging. Oops, I went the wrong way. Here we go.
While he's doing that, I do have one comment, if that's all right.
Please, yes.
So when I think billboards, and no offense to the Clear Channel folks who are here, when I think billboards, I think drive-through communities. And I don't want Bloomington to be a drive-through community. And I think that that's why it just, just bugs me, because I know that the corridor of 494 where the billboards are tends to be a place where people drive through. And I know we're going to do some, there are changes being made to 494 to have that even more so. And so I just, I'm sensitive to the fact that I don't want to see Bloomington as a drive-through community, and having billboards leads me to believe that. I mean, when I think billboards, I think driving up to Duluth and looking at all the billboards as you drive up there. And so therefore, I just am, I'm okay with letting them live the way that they live, but not encouraging change to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Cookton, uh, so the, the existing sign ordinance draft has three categories, um, based on the number of tenants. It's one, single tenant, two tenants to 19 tenants, and 20 or more tenants. Um, and so the day limitation of those three categories respectively is 60 days, 90 days, or 120 days. Uh, to the comment I heard earlier about the same business being up for that extended period of time, the language both in that, this draft and in option B actually has a 60-day limitation for each individual tenant. Um, and I would again highlight the point about if you have multiple tenants that both have signs up on the same day, that counts as one day, not multiple days. Just again reiterating that point.
And can you help, I'm sure you said it earlier, but can you help explain the just, uh, the justification, reasoning why a multi-tenant building we think is more appropriate for more calendar days than a, a smaller strip center?
Yeah, so Chair Cookton has the, uh, person from Kraus provided testimony, testimony to, just with the greater number of, uh, businesses, there're going to be, uh, a greater number wherever you feel comfortable that range is. It is sensical or rational that, uh, they're going to have a greater, uh, demand for temporary signage based on special sale events, or grand openings, or, uh, other commercial activities. Uh, so a 10-tenant building versus a two-tenant building is just going to have a greater demand for that signage type.
So this is per building?
Correct. Yep.
So in the case of, just say, South Town, I think there's like three or four buildings there. Those are separate buildings?
Uh, that's incorrect. Let me take, so it would be based on a site basis.
Site.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we would, we would capture the amount of tenants on an individual site or property, or, uh, in some cases, planned development. But, um, I would say that there's not many. Um, uh, you know, I think why staff presented this option B to you tonight is that, um, we felt that the expansion of the allowance only was applicable to a limited number of properties in Bloomington, on the basis that not that many sites have that many tenants. So that's why we were comfortable presenting that as an alternative.
Could we see plan B again?
Yes.
Forgive me for...
It's okay.
Perhaps misunderstanding this a little bit. Okay. Well, I do like the language of no individual tenant exceeding 60 days per calendar year. That makes me feel significantly more comfortable. I apologize. I missed that the first time. 180 days per year.
So half the year.
Half the year. It's 30 or more, 20. It's close enough within my range where I don't think it, it would prevent me from supporting it. To answer your question, Commissioner Albrecht. So thank you, Mr. Johnson, for that clarification. Commissioner Curry.
So, um, in terms of, you know, if we skip the billboard, I'm supportive of this plan B for the temporary signs. I could be supportive of the whole project or the whole proposal, I suppose, if I had a better understanding of just this, uh, electronic signage that faces residential, because they really don't want, I mean, once the sign's installed, then it doesn't matter what we do a year from now. Somebody who lives across the street, it's like, hey, you cost me $10,000 in property value, and I'm really annoyed living in Bloomington now. So I really don't want people, you know, coming back to us and saying, what, what are you guys doing? So I don't know if there's a way to be more comfortable about that tonight, but I'm still concerned about that.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you. Um, Steph, do you have a map of where the four billboards are today?
Uh, yeah, I, I, um, you know what, I don't have that in my current slide deck. Uh, but one is on 35W, um, close to 490, or, uh, no, forgive me, I'm more on the south side. There is one in the northwest in 494. There's one just to the west of Portland on 494. And, uh, there is one close to, uh, 494 and 35W. Matthew could probably tell me better than I could. Am I close?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. There's two on 35W effectively, and two on 494, at kind of one on the east side, one on the west side.
You want that repeated, Commissioner Goldsman?
Just for clarification, the one on the east side...
Mm-hmm.
...that is a budding to Seven Hills. Is that in Richfield, or is that in Bloomington?
Seven Hills.
Prep Academy. It's an old Minnesota business.
Chair, Commissioner Goldsman, that, that one is in Richfield.
That one's, okay.
Thank you for the lifeline.
Thank you.
And I, with respect to Commissioner Curry's question, um, so facing residential, I mean, frankly, that's going to come up in other electronic sign types much more so than billboards. So I mean, I, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about billboards, but the nighttime issue and the nighttime restriction about static, or, you know, I said, mentioned some cities require you to turn them off at night, that's more applicable, uh, it's within 150 feet of a residential property. So not many billboards, I don't think any of those billboards are within 150 feet. They might be visible from a farther distance away. But, uh, um, with respect to the kind of interventions or the tweaks that you can make to it, I mean, you certainly could look at extinguishing them. Um, right now, we have in effect, the existing code has an orientation standard, which in effect serves as additional setback at 150 feet. And so that's why that, um, uh, number, uh, we're trying to capture what, the value of what that number was before, but put some restrictions, some brakes on it, if you will, uh, by requiring that it can't change during the evening time. And we do have brightness restrictions, as I mentioned. So, um, you know, potential interventions are just to make the buffer 150 feet, because we have 100-foot buffer in the proposal. Or you could say they have to be turned off at the evening time. That comes with the downside of additional staff, code enforcement, activities, and those things. But, you know, could, uh, you know, offer potential, um, uh, assurance or intervene in bad situations. But, uh, you know, the, part of this discussion and the complexity of all these topics is why we're recommending the year look back on some of this stuff, because these operational things can be changed. Um, you're going to have some property owners who might be upset, um, about some of these things, if you go in one direction or the other. Um, but, you know, these operational things, once the sign is in, uh, in the ground, as you said, Commissioner Curry, doesn't mean that the operation of it can't, uh, change subject to a new city standard. So just something to think about.
Any further discussion?
kind of issues that were questions during your discussion, um, but you, you, there was some discussion about whether or not to recommend the conversion of, uh, digital billboards, and if the commission wants to go in that direction, that's your purview, but I just want to be specific about which, uh, specific provision within the draft ordinance you would strike or change. And the reason I say that is that we added that provision in non-conformity and in the, uh, billboard section, it's an exception to allow the conversion. So, um, that's most likely what you'd be striking, and I just want to be clear about that. Because the existing billboard standards has a dwell time, none of them are electronic currently, um, but if you don't want to see that conversion, and then these are legally non-conforming, that's that non-conformity provision that you would not support, I just want to be clear about that. But I'll go to the recommendation slide.
Something we've done in the past, in the past, commissioners has made a series of motions. One thing we've done in the past is that we would, um, move to not recommend adoption, and then make a subsequent motion of something we would prefer. As Chair, I can't make a motion, so that's at your purview of how you want to handle this. I see, uh, city attorney, Assistant City Attorney Toski has stuck to the desk, checking in with you if you have any thoughts before we proceed here.
No, I was, Chair and Commissioners, I was just looking at the, um, the section that allows digital conversion of billboards, just so we had a right citation for you for your motion. So, that is, uh, twenty-one point three zero four point two zero subsection E, so that would be, uh, the, the section at issue.
Can we get that number one more time?
Sure. Twenty-one point three zero four point two zero E, parentheses E. So, like Mr. Johnson was saying, just so you were certain on what needs to be taken out before it goes to city council, if that's your intent.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Could I make a motion striking that subsection, and, uh, amending the language to option, we can call it option B? Could, do you want to start with that?
Do you want to start?
The temporary sign.
Yes.
To, to balance with what I was saying earlier is, perhaps by making multiple motions, there's a greater impact to city council that we do not approve as it's been proposed in offering a, um, option, but that's really semantics. So, however, you'd like to craft that motion, is that your discretion?
Chair Commissioners, I might just suggest a, a motion similar to what Mr. Johnson has in, in the staff report, just stating with the following amendments or something. So, you have one motion, two for a recommendation with your caveats, then in the motion two. So, you just have one, one motion, and then, uh, it says what alterations we want.
Mr. Markergaard? Chair Cookton? One approach that commissions used in the past a fair amount is to have some kind of discussion before the motion on each individual issue with some kind of straw polling of where people are at to see, uh, which issues the majority would support, and then potentially including that in a motion of support with the following amendments. Something to consider.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, if we were to go that approach, I'd ask for your help on, on the particular issues that are of interest to council that we have.
I got a list.
Okay. Uh, I'll ask the commission, is that a route you'd like to take here, is to walk through them one by one and do some perhaps informal straw polling? Seeing some nodding of heads. Mr. Johnson, please, uh, walk us through that list.
The first one was, thank you, Chair, the first one was electronic billboard conversion. So, I think we, well-
I, I think what we'll do is we'll just go down the line here. I would say, uh, no.
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 Nope. The second one was electronic sign dwell time, the, the actual standard itself, the duration.
I'm gonna say I support staff's recommendation.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
The electronic sign nighttime restriction when within a hundred and fifty feet, between a hundred and one feet and a hundred and fifty feet of residential uses.
Can you explain that one a little more?
Yeah, so the, if a sign, if the electronic sign was located, um, outside of the residential buffer requirement, which is a hundred feet, but within a hundred and fifty feet, uh, operation of that sign would be limited to static display, meaning it can't change, it can no longer change after that time, and nighttime is being nine PM to seven AM, uh, or be turned off. So, that gives the sign owner-operator two choices to make, operationally speaking.
Okay. I'm gonna say I have no opinion.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yes.
I, yeah, support the restriction.
Okay, the, um, next one was parking structure signs, Walzer Toyota submitted a letter about, um, uh, increasing the number of building signs. Currently, the draft has a limitation of one individual sign, and a number of one, um, and a hundred and fifty square foot cap.
And their proposal is to keep the square footage cap, but allow multiple signs?
Correct, two signs on an elevation facing a public street.
I'm in favor of that one.
I'm indifferent.
Good.
I'm also indifferent.
I'm sorry, I was thinking about the residential.
So, currently, uh, where building signs are allowed on parking structures in Bloomington, uh, they're only allowed in a few one or two sign districts, I think, and so, and again, trying to create more continuity or less complexity, we're saying they're allowed on parking structures three stories or taller, but you're limited to one sign per elevation facing a street, up to a hundred and fifty square feet. Walzer Toyota, uh, supports that general proposal, but would like the opportunity to have two building signs, uh, on that elevation, not changing the total square footage allowed, but just the number of them.
Uh, no.
From one to two.
No. What's, the staff recommendation is a single sign?
It's a single sign, but, uh, I guess as noted in the staff report, this is not one that breaks our back, so to speak.
Okay, yeah, that, that's okay.
Yep.
For clarity, uh, single sign?
I support that, yes, I support the Walzer recommendation.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
The commercial promotions, option B, uh, discussion, temporary signs.
I lean yes.
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 Okay, thank you, and then the last discuss, there was discussion around the individual maximum building sign size of two hundred and, which is two hundred and fifty square feet in the class-three sign district, and a hundred and fifty square feet in the class-five sign district. And, uh, we didn't have a lot of staff response on that one here during the meeting, but, uh, just from our perspective, keep in mind the aspects around non-conformity, yes, you can seek variances, um, to an individual, uh, to that standard. Uh, however, and I'm not trying to confuse the matters, but currently, the PD, uh, the tools in the PD would not allow flexibility to that. So, if you wanted to create a pathway to have PD flexibility to that standard, we would need to amend the, the plan development overlay allowances, which, uh, if that's your kind of legislative direction, I know how I would do that, and I would be able to capture that, uh, spirit. Um, but it just, where, where should the cap be for a maximum individual sign? And then the other thing I would say too is that, um, uh, obviously, you're allowed to have, uh, as many signs as you want on a wall that fills in your overall square footage allowance. I know that this has been a little bit confusing in the past, so forgive me, uh, but what the two hundred and fifty square feet is, it's an individual sign. It's not that you only get two hundred and fifty square feet on an elevation, you can have ten signs on an elevation of various sizes. What this is saying is that, uh, it's creating a cap of the individual signs.
Okay, thank you. Um, I support the recommendation in the staff report.
I do as well.
Yes, I do as well.
Yep, me too.
Okay, thank you all, and that's, that was, that was the six items that I wrote down.
Okay, so, based on what you've written down there, uh, which ones would, would be needed to make a motion based on what we just told you?
I, I look to Attorney Toski to fill in my blanks, but I think the motion you would make is, um, I move to recommend approval, um, subject to the amendments as agreed upon, uh, as part of planning commission discussion and, uh, outlined in these six items.
Can we keep it that general, or do we need to list?
Do you want to list just the ones that change?
Yeah, those two.
I think so.
So, option, forgive me, uh, temporary signs, option B changed, and, uh, the parking structure sign changed from one to two, uh, and the digital conversion, those are the three amendments-
Okay.
-that don't follow the staff recommendation.
Okay, the ones that don't follow the staff recommendation are not converting to digital signs, the Walzer Toyota of, uh, allowing two instead of one, and the option B for the, uh, promotional temporary signage.
As shown on the staff slide.
As shown in what we're calling, uh, number letter B.
Which will be as part of the official record.
Uh, are my fellow commissioners clear on, on all of that?
You want to do it?
Go for it.
Well, I'll do my best.
Commissioner Goldsman?
Thank you, Chair. In case PL two zero two three dash two zero five, I move, moved to recommend adoption of an ordinance establishing new standards and procedures for signs, thereby amending chapters one, two, twelve, fourteen, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one, and appendix A of the city code with the amendments of striking the conversion of existing digital boards, twenty-one dot three zero four dot two zero E, um, changing the parking structure sign requirements from one to two, and implementing, uh, temporary sign B plan in the table from the staff report.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or clarification? All those in favor of the motion as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes four zero. This will move on to city council, February twenty-sixth, as a public hearing item. A special thank you to Mr. Toski, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Markergaard for helping us through that one, that was complicated, um, but we, we did a well, a fine job, so thank you to the three of you.
Thank you.
Item number three is a study item, the applicant is the city of Bloomington, uh, regarding environmental standards review. Michelle Lincoln is our planner on this one. Uh, Ms. Lincoln, is this the first time you've presented before us?
Uh, Chair and Commission, no, I have presented the annual housing report information.
Okay, well, we're happy to have you back.
Thank you.
And, uh, please, continue forward.
Sorry, just one moment while I prepare.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break?
I think we'll do a five-minute, uh, recess, um, and we'll, we will restart at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Curry went to use the restroom, I was wondering if we could just do two-second, two-minute break for a restroom break? And then I'm going to go through each of the natural features that I reviewed, both as the background and analysis and policy actions altogether. And then I will pause for questions, and so that way you have opportunities to ask for clarification, because I did choose to be as concise as I can while providing relevant details in order for you to have discussion. But I want to make sure that your questions are answered throughout the process. So there will be opportunities through these features where I will pause, so that way you can ask those questions. And then after we've kind of reviewed each of the environmental features, we'll do a summary where I will kind of go over what the staff recommendation was, make notes of any recommendations that you have that might differ from staff recommendations, and then document those, so that way they can be in the staff report for planning commission. This is going to planning commission currently on February 12th, so I want to make sure I capture all of your discussion in that addition to my report. And then there'll be time for additional questions and discussion if there's other things you want to cover that I didn't specifically cover in these items. So that's kind of the roadmap for my presentation. So with background and methodology, this project developed from considerations from the single and two-family amendments that were adopted in May 2023. Council had recommended that planning staff pursue research in order to understand environmental standards and low-density residential and how they intersect, and what are possible actions we could take to make sure we have a balance between protecting our precious environmental features, but also making sure that we are responding to the housing need in Bloomington, which is critical, as you heard from me from the annual housing report last year. Also, the original project plan included a review of native landscaping. That is actually a project that is being led by Public Works and the Sustainability Commission. They are handling, kind of pulling together a native landscaping, a native and managed landscaping ordinance, and that's in progress. There's always opportunities for me to collaborate with that group based on discussion here today, but I won't be covering what they're covering currently. You'll hear about that project more at a later date. So the environmental standards review covers trees, slopes, and wildlife and habitat. And those are the three items that I will be covering through the rest of the presentation. So for my methodology, when I conducted this, I first started with consulting ecological resources and research. I really wanted to understand the actual ecosystem elements and what they're susceptible and vulnerable to just by existing as environmental features. So I dug deep into the science of those things, and then started layering in the complexity when we talk about the human impact and on those vulnerabilities and susceptibility, as well as land use, and then land use policy. So there's kind of a lot of layers going there, and I layered that in on top of what is a slope, what is a tree canopy, those types of things. I also conducted a review where I compared 10 Minnesota city codes across these three features, really focusing on those kind of like foundational characteristics of those environmental features and how would they intersect with policy, just to understand where Bloomington is in comparison to similar cities or cities who are close proximity. I collaborated with relevant internal staff, which included Public Works, which is city forestry, engineering, stormwater, legal, to make sure that I was really understanding how our standards or these types of standards interacted with other chapters that planning may not have an influence in but could learn from, or may need to work with in the future in order to make changes. Public engagement was done through our Let's Talk Bloomington page, where I describe environmental features and kind of our goals and protecting them, as well as balancing that with housing need and infill development. We had one comment that was just kind of, you know, like, I'm glad that you're doing this. I really love vegetation in managing soil erosion, and I love it too. So that's documented in the staff report, and you'll hear a little bit more about where those vegetation comes in for environmental features and protection. And then I also performed some Bloomington-specific analysis and mapping, so really looking at the Bloomington code for itself and how it interacts with environmental features. So in determining the interventions for the protection of environmental features, I kind of looked at everything that we do already that reviews environmental standards and gives us discretion or authority to protect environmental features. I've listed them here in three different categories, and some of them might overlap, you know, a little bit, that might have more than one's a review, but it's also a policy document, but it's also law. But I just kind of generally put these in categories for easy reading. And through this, through these general categories, there's 18 interventions, and these are just categories. So even, there's even more interventions that we do in order to make sure that we are paying attention to our environmental features through low-density residential development. So this is a kind of a simple table for the area city code review, so these are the other cities that I looked at. The tree preservation, all cities I looked at had some sort of general tree preservation for low-density residential. Some of those things kind of varied, based on the city's discretion to vary, kind of, like, there's a range that is acceptable for slopes and protections. Bloomington is the only one listed here. I want to be clear that other cities all have soil erosion and sedimentation control policies. Bloomington was the only one that had actual steep slopes ordinance. So we specifically identify steep slopes in our code, while other cities didn't do that. They still had slopes protections, but it might be more spread out, or not maybe as clear or direct as what Bloomington has in our code. And then for wildlife and habitat, St. Paul very specifically has a district called RL, and that is, actually has the, as listed in the purpose, wildlife and habitat preservation or maintenance. Whereas Bloomington and Burnsville, we have non-residential conservation districts. So residential is not allowed in our conservation district zoning. It is not very common, even nationally, to have wildlife and habitat ordinances. So we're not necessarily out of sync with trend, although that could be changing, but there's not necessarily a lot of data currently locally on what that would look like. Might be forging a new path if we decide to go that way. So we're going to look at trees. So typical standards cover four major things. Protection of existing trees, replacement of trees that have been removed, removal activities and when and how many trees can be removed, and prohibited species, so what can be planted within the city limits. Also, tree surveys, preservation plans, landscaping plans, ensure that trees are accounted for during plat or development processes. So it's not necessarily only during plats or subdivision. We also have things in place for development processes where we are paying attention to, you know, where trees are located on a property. So our current tree preservation standards, so Bloomington has some of the more extensive tree preservation standards compared to the other cities. We have a tree preservation section, so it's called out very specifically, 21.301.04, I think, is our tree, calling from memory, but it's in chapter 21. And it covers the main activities that I mentioned, the prohibited species, protection, removal, and replanting. And it also covers things like having thresholds for those things in single-family, some, or excuse me, in low-density residential, not necessarily single-family, I'll go over that a little bit more. And also things like specific tree species or tree amounts, and that other cities didn't necessarily get into that type of granular detail. Some did, but it's, we're on that end with the cities that did on more extensive there. So tree preservation standards apply to all single and two-family plats or subdivisions in R1, RS1, and R1A. That means if a plat came up for, I mean, any plat, but especially like under our changes for the single and two-family amendments that were made, tree preservation standards would apply. Reforestation plans are required when 50% or more of total diameter breast height inches are removed of significant trees. And that just means that diameter breast height is basically the tree around at, well, I'm shorter, but at a kind of standard breast height. And so we do have thresholds where we start to trigger and say you have to replace some of the trees if you're removing them. And then also in tandem with some discussion about slope, if there's a significant tree on slopes of greater than 25%, which is very steep, but would, and would fall under steep-slope standards, those cannot be removed without approval of the city forester. So there's some kind of layering there between protecting our slopes through soil stabilization with trees, but also protecting our tree canopy. So then there's some nice syncing there between some code elements. So now I'm going to talk about policy options that I, that kind of rose to the top out of everything that I reviewed. So I have four here, and we're going to go through each of them one by one. So our first one is text cleanup for clarity. No actual resident or regulation changes, so the standards aren't changing, but it's making the code much easier to engage with by staff, residents, or anyone who is needing to go to this code for any reason. The block of text at the top is our current significant tree definition. So this actually isn't listed in our regulations, it's listed in our definitions. Definitions aren't typically the best place for regulation, so it's kind of muddying things a little bit, and also making it a little bit difficult to engage with or understand exactly what your requirements would be for significant trees. So this recommendation recommends that the definition be amended to be more broad, to really talk about the kind of metrics for significant trees, which is trees that are mature, of a certain size, of a certain amount, or in an ecologically advantaged location that provides significant ecosystem benefits to the community. So it's kind of a definition of a significant tree that was developed through a variety of, pulling things from a variety of sources that kind of capture the spirit of what people mean with the significant tree. The table that you see here is that definition, but just put into a table. This one actually says what a significant tree is based on its category or type and its size. So we do get into kind of thresholds and metrics in more detail, and this table could be located actually in the, outside of the definitions, in one of the subsections of the code for tree preservation. Is there any questions so far? Yes, Commissioner, Chair and Commissioner Goldsman, please.
Go ahead, Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you. One question that I had on this is maybe right around, it's more about the specific species of trees. So I see that we don't allow willow, box elder, aspen. Why do we not include things like ash or elm that have obviously been blighted by pests or disease? Is that something that?
Thank you, that's a, thank you, Chair and Commissioner Goldsman, that's a great question. So this is just in talking about significant trees, there is a prohibited trees section, 18.03, that includes a more expansive list of trees that are not allowed, and includes more trees than this. This is kind of talking more about what trees are considered significant and what is generally allowed. And the reason why it's here is because if it's a significant tree, the city forester may make an exception. So if it's a mature, stable, non-diseased tree, then the city forester will say that's a significant tree, you're going to have to replant, protect, or otherwise make accommodations for that tree. So that's why you can't plant them, but you can protect them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your question.
Okay.
Okay, yay. So another text cleanup for clarity would be, there's an ambiguity here. It says that tree protective fencing is required before any issuance of a grading or building permit. And this is within the tree preservation code, but it's pretty, it's not specific enough for tree preservation, because tree surveys and tree preservation plans are only listed as required for plat applications, and not all, not all grading and building permits would be tied to a plat application. Sometimes you could do a plant application, but you may not get to the building or grading permit yet. So that means the tree, if there is protecting to be done, kind of gets lost here. The suggestion would be saying when tree preservation standards are triggered, tree protective fencing is required before any issuance or grading or building permit. That's actually how it's done in practice. So this would just have the code reflect practice and just clear up a little bit of an ambiguity there. So this, a policy action has some benefits. It's improved readability for all code users. There's likely no equity impacts. Current equity impacts are unexplored, but you wouldn't have any new ones, so we wouldn't necessarily be getting into unintended consequences territory. And we would likely need no further in-depth study for these changes, because it's just adding clarity. Challenges would be staff time and resources to coordinate across departments. If we're kind of doing clarity changes, we want to make sure that the self-referential nature of the code is that integrity is, and quality is maintained, and then aligning, and then further aligning the definitions and refinements across relevant code chapters. So it's staff time as well as just getting into the code and making sure things are all making sense and represent the code as intended. Are there any questions about this policy action?
Seeing none.
Thank you.
Mr. Curry, Commissioner Curry.
As a study item, do we, should we just provide feedback on these points as they come up?
This is a study item, so it's more open, and I'll ask Ms. Lincoln, should we wait until you're done with item one, and then you'll ask if we support it, or how would you like us to handle that?
I think that at the end of the tree preservation section, I have a list of the, each of the policy actions, and we can go through them one by one to kind of get a temperature check on if you support it, or your thoughts about it at that point. But I will take comments at any time, and I'll make notes as we go through.
That sounds great, thank you.
Yeah. So then item, policy action two for tree preservation is a comprehensive tree preservation standards review. This would be a more in-depth tree preservation review across all code. Review, and this would review regulations for best practice updates or regulation impacts, and some things this could likely impact, either change the current regulation or add them, is diameter breast height recommendations for significant trees, tree species. As mentioned, there could be some possible adjustments that we could have to our tree species or further qualifications, planting locations, threshold triggers for removal, or critical root area protections. So there's kind of a lot of things that could come up during an in-depth review across the code that could be explored and later become amendments. So the benefits of this is that a newly updated system or newly updated results with amendments can mean no or minor revisions in the long term. So we're kind of updating our science, and that just sets us up for like the next round of science until it becomes, you know, outdated. So challenges, staff capacity necessary would be significant. Current standards are already robust, and in discussion with city forestry, there wasn't any major concerns that our code was out of sync with the best practices, although like some minor changes or that require study could be explored. There was nothing that would, that came up during that discussion that would imply that the implementation of our current code still protects our environmental features and balances our housing need. And then we could do the in-depth standards review and find that no or minimal changes may be needed. And this reasoning comes from the fact that our current standards are already quite robust. Any questions regarding policy action two? So we wouldn't necessarily be getting into unintended consequences territory. And we would likely need no further in-depth study for these changes because it's just adding clarity. Challenges would be staff time and resources to coordinate across departments. If we're kind of doing clarity changes, we want to make sure that the self-referential nature of the code is that integrity is and quality is maintained and then aligning and then further aligning the definitions and refinements across relevant code chapters. So it's staff time as well as just getting into the code and making sure things are all making sense and represent the code as intended. Are there any questions about this policy action?
Seeing none.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Curry, Commissioner Curry.
As a study item, do we, should we just provide feedback on these points as they come up?
This is a study item, so it's more open. And I'll ask Ms. Lincoln, should we wait until you're done with item one and then you'll ask if we support it? Or how would you like us to handle that?
I think that at the end of the tree preservation section, I have a list of the each of the policy actions and we can go through them one by one to kind of get a temperature check on if you support it or your thoughts about it at that point. But I will take comments at any time and I'll make notes as we go through.
That sounds great. Thank you.
So then item two, policy action two for tree preservation is a comprehensive tree preservation standards review. This would be a more in-depth tree preservation review across all code. Review regula, and this would review regulations for best practice updates or regulation impacts. And some things this could likely impact either change the current regulation or add them is diameter breast height recommendations for significant trees, tree species. As mentioned, there could be some possible adjustments that we could have to our tree species or further qualifications, planting locations, threshold triggers for removal, or critical root area protections. So there's kind of a lot of things that could come up during an in-depth review across the code that could be explored and later become amendments. So the benefits of this is that a newly updated system or newly updated results with amendments can mean no or minor revisions in the long term. So we're kind of updating our science and that just sets us up for like the next round of science until it becomes, you know, outdated. So challenges, staff capacity necessary would be significant. Current standards are already robust and in discussion with city forestry, there wasn't any major concerns that our code was out of sync with the best practices, although like some minor changes or that require study could be explored. There was nothing that would that came up during that discussion that would imply that the implementation of our current code still protects our environmental features and balances our housing need. And then we could do the in-depth standards review and find that no or minimal changes may be needed. And this reasoning comes from the fact that our current standards are already quite robust. Any questions regarding policy action two?
Seeing none.
Policy action three is amending tree removal thresholds, rates of reforestation, and tree preservation applicability. Now, these are pulled out specifically or separately from policy action two because these are areas that typical areas that are opportunities for discretion. Cities like Burnsville have different tree removal thresholds based on the type of zoning, the type of development, the density, and they they actually get more granular based on those things because there's a little bit more discretion built into this. There's a little bit of a range where you could be a little bit more restrictive or a little less restrictive in this removal threshold. So our current removal threshold is 50% of significant treat inches. And then for our reforestation rate, we currently require 1.25 caliber inches per one inch removed. So requiring more tree if you remove significant trees. And then also expanding applicability to all new building permits for single and two family. Currently, tree preserve, these types of standards and tree preservation are only triggered with plat or subdivision applications. We can expand that to building permits where you might see some major structural changes on the property. So the benefits of these is the decision on these thresholds have some discretion with the city. So that gives us a lot of kind of leeway to be more or less restrictive depending on our goals. And also increasing the applicability is predicted to produce less than 10 additional projects per year for to approve. And this is based on the current rate of these types of applications. Five is actually the number that was quoted in the report. So I said 10 even just to be generous and give us a lot of room there, but that's about how much we could protect based on past rates of development. So the challenges here is coordination across divisions to fill resource gaps. Even though we have some discretion, we would still need to be sound in our reasoning scientifically in order to avoid any kind of like, like complaints or legal considerations where there might be undue cost burden. And if we don't have sound reasoning, it just kind of weakens the policy overall. So it's good to have that data there as we make these decisions based even on discretion. And also financial impacts on low density redevelopment would need to be explored and confirmed. We're kind of dealing with an economy of scale for low density residential where for all new building permits, if there's say adding square footage or to an existing structure, ADUs. Like if we change the thresholds at that scale, requiring more trees could be a larger percentage of the development and make it unfeasible. And we don't want to slow the rate of housing, but we also don't want to lose our our trees. So there's kind of some additional data there would be helpful to make sure that we are actually balancing those in a Bloomington specific context, even realizing that there's a range of discretion represented in the compared cities.
May I ask a question?
Yes, of course. Thank you. Chair and Commission?
What's a caliper inch?
Yes. Oh, um. Can I can I call in a lifeline on what a caliper inch is for a tree? Anyone know?
If anybody knows.
Yes, Mr. Markergard. Chair Cookton, if you imagine measuring a tree, so a caliper, something like if you can imagine what a caliper is, you would kind of measure it that way. In other words, it's, it's not like measurement around the tree, but it's more just the, that gets you a diameter, basically.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Planning Manager Markergard. Policy option four is to draft and incorporate a new tree credit system. Tree credits satisfy landscaping requirements through developers or property owners preserving or planting larger trees. So it's something along the lines of either we have a requirement that has a number, certain number of trees, they plant a larger tree and it counts as two. So it satisfies satisfies the requirement even though they only planted one. Or they might have a significant tree that is quite large and it alone satisfies the landscaping requirement. This can also be applied to other types of vegetation like shrubs, shrubs, not shrubs, shrubs. And current requirements do not factor in the age or size of existing or proposed trees. So this would be kind of a wholly new addition to the code. In the figure here, you see Brooklyn Park's credit system that kind of shows that how they exchange the tree, the tree credits to satisfy their landscaping requirements. So the benefits of this is it provides flexibility in meeting tree preservation and planting requirements, which could be important if we're evaluating the kind of economy of scale of low density, low density residential development. The challenges are that currently there's no single family development. There's no single family development landscaping requirements. So those would have to be amended to include requirements for this type of system to have benefit on the full range of low density residential. And then also scientific or professional reasoning from public works or city forestry would likely need to be required so that way we're getting the exchange rates right. And so we're actually incentivizing trees that do provide maximum benefit. So those were the four policy options for trees. And we can go through and kind of understand the temperature of planning commission for each of these options. And to clarify, so one and three are the staff recommendation. Chair and Commission comments?
Ms. Lincoln, are any of these dependent on the other? Like are they, does four include three, two, and one? Or could we select à la carte here?
Thank you for the question. You can select à la carte.
Okay. I'll first ask if any of the commissioners have comments on any of these, if there's any discussion or anything you'd like to have. Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Chair. First, I guess I'll just mention that we're just in transparency reviewing this because of the work that myself and our neighborhood did with the planning or with the city council last spring. So I've already, I don't know, just thought that's something that should probably be mentioned. So in terms of these options, just quickly, I think, you know, the table in the text cleanup is a good idea. I'm a little hesitant about generalizing definitions unless it's tied to a table. So there's still specific measurements and significant does not become like a blurry topic. The tree preservation standards, yeah, I think that seems like too much work, so I would probably just skip it. I think the, you know, mending, what was it? The tree removal thresholds. So that I think the the threshold, the 50% threshold, I think is something that would be interesting to look at. And maybe just specifically for like, say, the RS1 district, which is, and I, I would guess I'd look to Planning Manager Markergard to confirm this, but I think the RS1 district is really intended to be kind of an environmentally focused district. So to have a lower tree removal threshold of 40% versus 50% would maybe be more appropriate to put into that district specifically. Is that right?
Mr. Markergard?
Chair Cookton, Commissioner Curry. That's correct. The environmental preservation is a component of the RS1 district intent and we'll actually be discussing that in our our next item, what that intent should be and how it should change, if it should change. So, yeah, that is something the city could do is theoretically have different standards in in different districts.
Okay.
It does add some regulatory complexity, kind of like we talked about in the the last one.
Sure. Okay. So anyway, in terms of that, I mean, I think you have a policy, more of a policy justification for RS1 specifically, but anyways, I'm in support of protecting significant trees in the city. So in terms of the, what was the other piece of that one? The adding some sort of review for new single family developments? I think that would also make sense. I don't think that would necessarily reduce any new housing development because you're not necessarily subdividing. It's probably more somebody that's tearing down a house and redeveloping it for a much bigger house. So if that's what they want to do, I think you should try and, you know, at least protect some of the trees on the lot. So and then the credit system, I just don't, I don't know, I just don't think that's necessary. So those are my thoughts on all of them.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Perhaps what we'll do here to help Ms. Lincoln, we could do a sort of head count like we did on the last one to help her with her data. So perhaps first ask if there's any other general thoughts or comments? Commissioner Goldsman?
Thank you, Chair. One thing that I read in the staff report that wasn't talked about today, or maybe I just missed it, is there was, there was some verbiage in the staff report about the right of way and the canopy and within the right of way. Can you talk a little bit about that topic and where it fits here?
Yes. Thank you, Chair and Commissioner Goldsman. So with the right of way and public lands specifically, there's currently project underway for an urban forestry plan. So specifically talking about areas that have, that aren't just the bluff area or the Minnesota River Valley or areas that don't allow any development at all, so are public lands. And that is being evaluated because the city has kind of a significant amount of control and has the resources in order to enhance the tree canopy or restore the tree canopy through planting in the right of way. We also have kind of benefits of on-staff experts that can make decisions like is, can a tree of this type go here and be able to mature? Because with trees, trees that mature at 30 feet of height need 200 feet of critical root area. So like our city staff can make those determinations in our public lands and in our row. And that has just the benefit of being quickly effective. In cases of low density residential where these things would trigger, aren't very rapid. It'll be kind of here and there, and we may not be capturing the areas that need the most attention as far as tree canopy and getting the benefits from tree canopy. There is a like location in Bloomington in the east side that has very high or severe record of urban heat island and trees really and really help with that. There's a variety of things that can, of course, address urban heat island, limiting impervious surface or things like that. But trees is really one of them, providing trade, shade and stormwater benefits because of evaporation from leaves can also help cool the air. So cities just have the ability to kind of go in in the public right of way if there's space and plant a tree instead of waiting for the trickle of development of this type in order to enhance, like have the most impact and effectiveness of our tree canopy.
Any other general comments on trees? You know, I have a controversial stance on trees that rubs people the wrong way, but I like nice, small trees, like just a good, young, small tree. And that's informing some of the way I'm going to think about some of these things. I know that's not the popular stance on trees, but I like a nice, young tree. Okay, so why don't we go down the list here? And we'll, we'll sort of do a head count on on each of these items. So those in favor of item number one, the text cleanup, I'm in favor.
Yes. Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Number two is the tree preservation standards review. I'm going to say no.
No. No.
No.
Number three is amending the tree removal thresholds, et cetera, as we see on the screen. For me, it's a no.
No. No.
Yes.
Okay. And number four is draft and incorporate new tree credit system. It's a no for me. Commissioner Goldsman?
Maybe. I do not like the use of shrubs or landscapes instead of trees. I don't think that they are maintained, nor do they really help with longevity that a tree can do. So I could be, but I do not like the the shrubs or other types of plantings instead of a tree.
No.
No. Don't support credit system.
Fantastic. Thank you, Chair and Commission. Slops. So slopes are susceptible to soil erosion. They have, there's increasing susceptibility from more frequent and severe weather events, specifically precipitation, weather events. They are very vulnerable to impact stemming from human activities and development. And vegetation and trees are impactful in soil stabilization and stormwater management. So they kind of do double duty in keeping the soil stable, but also, you know, helping with water absorption or if there is stormwater runoff, it helps keep the soil together more so than bare soil. There are three policy options for slopes. First policy option is refining and adding the definition of steep slopes to the code. Currently, there is no definition that applies to properties outside of the bluff protection overlay district for steep slopes. So in the steep slope section specifically, there is no definition of what a steep slope is. Steep slopes as defined can typically be up to the city's discretion. State statute defines steep slopes as 12 to 18% and then 18% and higher are like severely steep slopes or bluff. The U.S. Department of Agriculture, the web soil survey is where I got this information. They define steep slope as greater than 15%. And then our own bluff protection overlay district defines steep slope as 18%. The benefits of this is we add clear definitions to provide more clarity to residents and regulations. Definitions allow for better monitoring, evaluation, and regulation on applicable parcels. And further in-depth study is likely not required. The challenges are alignment across the code will be necessary. If we decide to go with state statute or U.S. Department of Agricultural numbers, you'll be outside, out of step with the bluff protection overlay district, but that may be okay. Our bluff protection overlay district is kind of a special district that has unique governance, as outlined in the report, because of the watersheds and also the lower Minnesota River Valley. And it also, the slopes lead to water bodies, it leads down to the river. So there's kind of unique governance things there that go into defining steep slopes as 18%. So although is a consideration, it is not an insurmountable barrier.
Questions? Commissioner Goldsman?
So I guess you're just asking, should we define what a deep slope is? You're not, you're not defining it at a certain percentage yet.
Commissioner, can you, Commissioner Goldsman, can you clarify?
So when, when we go to define a steep slope, are you looking at defining a certain percentage? Is this considered a steep slope? You just haven't figured out what that number would be?
Yes, that is up to the city's discretion on where steep slope can be. What things that would influence what we would decide are how we want to regulate, potential impact of of steep, of defining it at that number and then adding regulations. Are we suddenly impacting a ton of properties and making them legally non-conforming or, you know, it, things like that? Also defining steep slope without a Also defining steep slope without additional regulations, like we just defined steep slope and now we have a number for it. And it's just clarity and there's not any kind of restrictive regulations tied to it. Then it, it really is just about readability and being more in line with, we have a section called steep slopes and we don't define steep slopes. So it's like, you know, it's kind of the start of any process where if we go on to add more steep slope regulations. But we don't define steep slopes, we kind of get in a precarious position on how we're justifying the regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So in discussing kind of in potential impact, our current regulations are based off of. Impervious surface calculations that start at 12 percent. So here is a map that shows all parcels that are average 12 percent slope or greater. Not including the bluff protection overlay district because those already have specific steep slope standards. So the number of residential parcels impacted by 12 percent or greater is 1,416. If we redefined average slope to 18 percent to kind of align with our bluff protection district, we would be impacting 300 parcels. Some of those larger parcels in yellow are residential, residential and public land guided. So there is a possibility that those wouldn't even be up for subdivision because we are already managing that land. But it's the possibility of, oh, well, I guess in 50 years we might change it. We might change the, the standards again. But it does set up, set us up for some strong reasoning for those impacted parcels. So you can kind of see the, such a large difference in, in defining steep slopes and possibly having separate regulations for them. Versus you continuing to use just average slope of 12 percent or greater. So some of the benefits, oh, wait, did I want to do this? This is my fault. I gave you the benefits and challenges twice. So clear definitions are great, and then the challenges are fairly minor because we are just adding a definition change. So this is, this is policy action two is add steep slope best practices. That, like I said before, we would have to define steep slope as based on policy action number one. But once we did, we can add some steep slope best practices that can be applied to the areas that qualify. So current standards, as I mentioned before, are based on impervious surface limits, based on average slope categories. So at 12 percent average slope, you can only have 34 percent maximum impervious surface coverage. And as the slope increases, your maximum coverage decreases. So there are some special provisions in the steep slope section that also say that trees are a fantastic way to help with stormwater mitigation. For runoff over steep slopes as well as surface water redirection, like downspouts pointing away from going down a slope. So those are additional requirements, but as far as best practices that people can use to change or to meet. Slope protection standards or steep slope protection standards, they could be expanded to give people more options. So this in front of you is the best management practices that are taken from the bluff overlay protection district. I've made adjustments for the language that does not apply or would need to be changed. These best practices allow people who have the capacity to do the best practice to be able to do it with approval of a stormwater plan. So this wouldn't be something where it's like, oh, just check the box. They would still have, we would still have to approve their best management practice in this. But it has some things that might require an engineer involved, but it also has some things that are like plant bare areas. With, you know, native seedlings or seed species, which could be a much more accessible option for, for people. So just kind of expands it a little bit and aligns with our bluff over protection overlay district without kind of muddying the differences in government, governance. Where that one has specific governance, but this can be applied broadly. So the bluff protection overlay district standards were updated in 2020. So they are likely the most updated best management practices that we could include. They give flexibility to property owners and developers, and BNP's would still be reviewed by the relevant staff. And then the challenges are not all bluff protection overlay district code language is relevant citywide. And then I showed you kind of an example of how we could easily adjust in order to make it applicable. The third op policy action is structure activity restrictions within buffers, within or buffers above steep slopes. This limits activity within steep slopes areas or within a certain different, distance from above a steep slope. To prevent slope destabilization. So the two options I outlined in the staff report are where a building, a builder soil disturbance prohibition within the steep slope. So you couldn't do anything at all in a steep slope area. Or a builder's, a soil disturbance prohibition within a certain distance from the top of the steep slope area. So slopes are usually calculated over a horizontal difference. And then the high point and the low point to get kind of a percentage of, of what the slope is. But also kind of identifies the part where it starts to slope down into a steep slope. So you identify that top point and you say you can't do any building or soil disturbance activities. Within five feet of that or 10 feet of that or 15 feet of that. So the benefits of this is it highly mitigates the risk of steep slope destabilization by basically making sure. Something, there's very little human activity disturbance there. Of course, severe or frequent water precipitation, precipitation, weather events could still cause soil disturbance. But human activity would be limited. So the challenges of this one is it's a very restrictive policy and it's a regulation without a clear return or benefit. So if we defined 18 percent slope and used, as a steep slope and kind of used the 308 properties. How many of those could be subdivided? How many of those, for these types of things to trigger? How many builder soil disturbance activities would, do we currently engage with and with? Is there any gaps where we would need to add more checks for those things? So there's kind of, it's unclear about the return of benefit based on the adjustments that we'd have to make for those properties. And also restrictions may give rise to taking arguments from residents because it does restrict use of a property significantly. Also, if we implement this, existing structures within the prohibition area would make them legally non-conforming. Or make maintenance extremely challenging if they couldn't get equipment back there to maintain a structure that's already there. So there would be a huge impact for even properties that have things there already. Any questions, Chair and Commission?
Only three options for this one, right? Do you have any more or?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, we'll go into your general discussion on slope policy. You know, the third one, I know the staff report is kind of lenient not to do it, but I kind of like it. I don't know. Like it seems sensible. So I'm kind of 50/50 on that one. I recognize the challenges, but I don't know, seems like a good idea to me to just, no, we're not going to allow you to do stuff within five feet of a really steep slope. That seems practical to me, but.
If I, if I could, actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, Chair Commission, if I can make a comment. So as I was talking about the definitions of slopes, there is some discretion about how we categorize. In, there is a resource that I looked at from Pennsylvania that did an extensive analysis on slopes and land use policy. As well as kind of looking at the U.S. Department of Agriculture web soil survey. They had different ones where it was like zero to 12 or zero to 6 percent is lower no slope. And six to 12 was moderate and, you know, so they kind of like, you could kind of divide them up. Where steep slope could be like 18 percent slope or higher. But you could have moderately steep slopes that could also have regulations. So that's, all of these things would have to be, have the scientific or policy justifications in order to make them defensible. But there is some options to not only just say steep slopes, that's what we're regulating. We could have some other refinement or get more granular, especially on things that are just super restrictive or, you know. We don't have to necessarily apply that to all slopes in a large range.
Yeah, I think the, the third point is, thank you, Chair. I think the third point is interesting. You know, just a couple of general points. I think, you know, this is obviously a review of environmental specific. But, you know, I think a lot of the interest in Bloomington is, I mean, I think the environmental aspect of Bloomington is what creates a lot of interest in the, in the city in general. And the slopes and trees and the unique characteristics of it. So. The other thought is, you know, I guess I hadn't seen anything in the whole presentation or not the presentation, but the packet about environmental justice. So I don't know if that comes into play in any of this. You mentioned the east side and having kind of a, you know, a heat zone. And that's obviously a big component of it. So I don't know, just a thought in general.
Okay, Commissioner Albrecht, I'm sorry, Commissioner Goldsman.
You brought up the east side and when I was looking at the map earlier. It seems, if you think about how we're approaching this as a city. And the map, are there any properties on the east side that are considered steep slope or slope in the yellow or the red? So.
So close to the bluff area, but not in it. So it's not in the bluff protection overlay district. In the southeast of the city, there are a few properties. This is an eyeball, of course, but they look like they wouldn't necessarily be up for subdivision. So impacting those areas to protect slope would have to occur outside of interventions for plat or subdivision.
So you have, if I may, sorry, you've brought subdivision up a few times. So is the goal of this to preserve our landscape, preserve our soil, our waterways? Or is it to prevent subdivision or to control subdivision?
And, thank you, Chair and Commissioner Goldsman. So in the reference to this, I bring up plat and subdivision because that's where the current intervention is. So slope or these environmental features most often, or where planning comes into place. Or, excuse me, where planning comes into the intervention, what we see are plats and subdivisions. And our code kind of reflects that where it's like, oh, if you're doing a building permit or a fence or that, but which don't all require permits or anything like that. We may not necessarily capture an environmental feature in that. Because, you know, fences below a certain height don't even require a permit. So we wouldn't know if someone's disturbing a slope or, or, I mean, I guess a tree coming down might be pretty obvious. But it would be almost like coincidental that we would notice it instead of intentional. So the, the plat subdivision comment is more about where our intervention comes from.
That, that helps kind of clarify it for me. Thank you.
Other general comments? Okay, I think we're ready to take a head count. Starting with number one, refining and adding the definition of steep slopes to the code. I'm in favor.
No.
No.
Ah, yes.
Okay, item two, add steep slope best practices. Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Lastly, structure activity restrictions with, within or buffers above steep slopes. Yes.
No.
No.
Eh, hesitant.
If I may, remembering this is a study item, so yes may just mean we want to see more information.
We want, yes, I'd like to see more information. Thank you for the guidance.
Wildlife. So the city has various plans that include wildlife and habitat objectives. Some of those plans are listed here. This isn't exhaustive, but this is a majority of them. So we have our 2018 Minnesota River Valley Natural and Cultural Systems Plan, our Natural Resources Prioritization and Management Strategies for Bloomington Parks. Our Ford 2040 Comprehensive Plan, our Surface Water Management Plan, and our Wetland Management and Protection Plan. Also with wildlife and habitat, there's kind of a lot of ways to support habitat. So things like the urban forest, forest plan that I mentioned earlier could also support wildlife. In talking about restoration and biodiversity and increasing the connectivity between these areas by expanding the habitat and strengthening the habitat. So as I mentioned before, the support for the maintenance and establishment of wildlife habitat features are a collaboration across topics in the code. Like tree preservation and landscaping and screening, but also the future, possible native landscaping ordinance. Public lands play a critical role in biodiversity and connectivity of wildlife and habitat areas. They are the largest continuous areas of habitat and connectivity. So maintaining those is very important and is represented by the plans. The city, city staff is already prioritizing wildlife and habitat in those things. So this map here is the Bloomington Wildlife Corridor. And I say this is the, this is from the Wildlife Corridor map from the Wildlife Action Network, the Wildlife Action Plan from Minnesota DNR. This is just the wild, the Bloomington specific clipped to show the kind of local context. So as you can see here, we have a lot of areas that are in the bluff or in the nature areas, nature preservation areas like the lower Minnesota River Valley. As well as our public lands and parks. Actually, let me. Was another, hold on one moment. I'm just trying to see if. So I'm just skipping ahead a little bit because I think this, this map specifically highlights what's inside of the DNR Wildlife Corridor. So as you can see, the, the pink, pinkish areas are our low-density residential. But we have a significant amount of public lands in yellow as well as water bodies or non-residential uses. So we have industrial. The two circles represent some areas where you could see it in south, the south loop. Part of the south loop is technically in the Wildlife Corridor area according to this map, as well as City Hall and surrounding industrial areas. I'll talk a little bit more about kind of the applicability of that as we go through the rest of the policy options. But I thought this was good context to share as I go through that.
What were the circles?
Oh, those, those represent kind of general areas that have like, high, like more intense development, I guess you could say. Cause like City Hall, we have industrial uses around us. The railroad tracks could be seen as a barrier to wildlife movement. But, you know, those are here. And then also with South Loop, it's, there's some high-density residential there. High-density, medium, and high-density residential is not part of this study, but it's just kind of showing generally areas that are, have more intense development than the low-density residential. So this map here is actually from the Wildlife Action Network report. These identify species of significant concern. And these are, this scoring factors in a couple of things. So the presence of the species. The vulnerability of the species in these areas, as well as biodiversity or ecological integrity. So there's kind of a few variables that go into their calculations. And as you can see, like South Loop generally, this, the scale isn't quite the same because this map ident doesn't use city level, it's county level. It's more about regional resource planning to get granular. The kind of things that end up smoothing those types of numbers are, well, we identified one species here and we're going to apply a buffer to assume it might be here. So it doesn't necessarily look at Bloomington and go, well, it has high density residential, so the species wouldn't be there. They don't kind of calculate it that way. They're much more high level. But for things like the Minnesota River Valley or the bluff, which have significant more regulation and data and monitoring, you can see that they do indicate high levels of presence of species and their particular vulnerability, which prioritizes them for protection. And these circles represent the same areas in the previous map. And I also want to point out that this makes it look like the corridor like isn't connected to the northwest of Bloomington. Because this considers things like vulnerability and there's a lot of public lands in that area. It's basically kind of saying, well, they don't have, they might be present, but they don't have a lot of vulnerability. So they may not be in, that's why it's not indicated on this specific map. So that's why it doesn't look like it's connected. It's not because there aren't like great biodiversity or ecological areas there. It's that the vulnerability or other factors might bring it off the list of consideration in this specific type of map. So there are four policy options that I'll be going through. So Wildlife Conservation Overlay District. So an overlay district would apply specific wildlife and habitat standards to the parcels within the district. Their requirement would be based on Bloomington specific ecological requirements to support habitat. And this would potentially impact sixty-three hundred low density residential properties. And that's this map again, that kind of shows this. Now of the wildlife corridor, sixty-three hundred parcels represents twenty-nine point seven percent of the total area within there. And then about thirty-two percent are public lands. And then the remaining thirty-eight percent are water bodies or non-residential uses.
Question?
Yes.
Can you go back to number one, please?
Yes.
So the first bullet point says would apply specific wildlife and habitat standards. Forgive me if I missed it. What are those habitat standards?
Thank you Chair and Commission for that question. So that would actually need to be studied. So that's a data gap with the Minnesota DNR Wildlife Action Plan. They don't get that granular for data. It's a lot of high level data that kind of has a lot of smoothing. Not that it's not valuable data, it very much is. It's it's very useful for natural resources, planning management at kind of a regional level and general objectives, working with the DNR works with various conservation organizations in order to go in and target specific areas across the state. And so those kind of happen, you know, they could often happen on like public land that they would have easy access to, or they make those agreements kind of on a case by case basement base basis with property owners on private land. So there's kind of a data gap on what those standards would be. The LA did something similar. They have a Wildlife Conservation Overlay District and they recently kind of undertook this. And I had mentioned it in the report, they started their process in 2014 and it took the consultants seven years to provide the ecological background and data in order to provide the foundation for their ordinance. And then they began drafting their ordinance. And as of, as of that went to their governing bodies in 2021. And in 2024, it has not been approved. It is still ongoing. So those kind of like data gaps are huge. They are often required in order to make sure there's proper justification. And also making sure there's not things like regulatory takings for property that leave the ordinance vulnerable. So it's not actually impacting or improving wildlife and habitat because it's struck down in court or challenged. So in looking at the requirements for the Bloomington context, we don't know. LA is actually a little different too. They have more vacant land than we do. They have, you know, about thirty thousand parcels and fourteen percent of them are vacant. And then parcels can be very large there. So we're looking at a really different context. So we would need the Bloomington specific context and research in order to craft these regulations.
Thank you.
So it says add steep slope best practices. That is an error on my part. The benefits and challenges are for the policy action number one for wildlife and habitat. So that's just a typo. So the benefits are the results of extensive study would produce highly specific Bloomington data that would be useful in multiple contexts, but also just great for the justification for having those standards. And then the challenges, benefits of creating an additional overlay district is unclear with the available data that we have now. As I mentioned, restrictions may give way to regulatory taking argument, taking arguments from residents. And data gaps may not be resolved without significant time, expertise and funding. Would likely require very specific experts and consultants in order to get that type of monitoring. Policy action two is wildlife and habitat education for low density residential properties. So something we could use that that DNR corridor information for is identically, you know, identifying those sixty-three hundred residential properties or even further industrial properties. We could notify every parcel that's within that, within that corridor and distribute information to them that in various medians, online, social media. Try to maximize our reach and make sure like a letter from the city doesn't end up in the shredder recycling, recycling. And, you know, it starts having an impact. These types of things could include some of the things that a wildlife district, overlay district might have as regulation, but have them as options. So you might have wildlife friendly fencing, which has ground to bottom of fence clearinging to allow movement of wildlife. You can encourage different biodiversity and landscaping requirements in order to influence, in order to enrich the habitat that the wildlife may be in or moving through. So the benefits, it kind of depends on the scope of the materials. But information and education can be a cost effective way to raise awareness and influence behavior over time. The opt-in nature of the policy option means that residents can determine their own capacity to implement changes. Some of the wildlife and wildlife friendly fencing could be cost prohibitive. We're kind of in an era where we're trying to increase homeownership of BIPOC individuals who were historically excluded from homeownership. And then we could implement regulations that then put cost burdened on a group that was already excluded from homeownership with a financial consideration. So having an opt-in and also changing perspectives and behavior could be a way to still have impact without necessarily increasing inequities. And resources are like, resources are likely available to produce these recommendations for residents. So we wouldn't need a consult necessarily consultant to do highly specific Bloomington data in order for us to produce good recommendations to residents who are inside the wildlife corridor. So the lead or responsible department would be to be determined. Time, resources, data necessary to produce and distribute the materials could be cost prohibitive. This is very dependent on the method that we choose. So maybe a mailer would be not as cost effective, but maybe something like a broad, you know, mobile campaign through neighborhoods could, you know, require more staff time or more preparation that could be cost prohibitive. And then effectiveness can be unpredictable or results may only be revealed over a very long timeline. So you might have to trust the process and in keep monitoring to effectiveness. And this might be asking residents, have you made wildlife or habitat improving decisions on your property, you know, based on your interaction with these materials? So we could have a provide a variety of ways where we can ask residents these questions and get that information to see if we are actually influencing behavior over time. Policy option three is habitat supportive regulations for low density residential properties. These encourage biodiversity through a variety of standards for native landscaping, tree planting and water quality. They discourage or prohibit plant species that are detrimental to habitat. So it's things like invasive species that out compete species required for biodiversity. And they can be implemented within landscaping and screening requirements. They don't necessarily have to be a separate ordinance or section. And as the benefits, as I mentioned, they can be implemented across multiple points in the code. And then the challenges are enforcement would likely fall outside of the planting division. Environmental health handles most of our nuisance or violations. So we would have to coordinate with them to understand the kind of impact or challenges in enforcing this type of code, especially for like, you know, if we do native landscaping, but it's in the rear of the of the property, how do we get our eyes on that to know? And then increase resource costs on low density residential property owners. So if we require native landscaping and that comes and how we kind of ensure that it's the proper native landscaping because there's enforcement involved. Does that involve a cost for landscape architect or professionals? That could increase the cost of owning the home and maintaining it over time. There's difficulty identifying qualifying habitat on a parcel level and monitoring long term. This kind of hearkens back to our data gap problem, which may impact the effectiveness of regulations. So now we have wildlife supportive policies for low density residential properties. This is not inclusive of habitat supportive activities. These are things like access to food, reproduction, life cycle events and sleeping areas. So it's really about mobility, movement, connectivity. And these are include the things I mentioned previously, which might be wildlife friendly fences or structure setbacks or buffers that make it so that way movement is not impeded through fencing or structure type, various structure types. The benefits is it mitigates harm to wildlife through fencing. Certain types of fencing can entangle or harm or even kill wildlife in some cases. Or depending on the, you know, the the quality or the condition of the fence. And this facilitates movement and connectivity of the wildlife as they travel lots across the landscape, which also could give them access to areas that are public land that would already kind of facilitate freedom of movement. So it's about getting wildlife safe access to that wherever they may be in the wildlife corridor. So challenges are similar to the habitat supportive policies is that enforcement and monitoring would be really difficult. Many structures do not require permits. So if someone has, you know, a garage or excuse me, like a shed that's below a certain amount, they could put that up. And that could have impact on, on, on these factors of movement or, or even just access to food. New requirements could also create a significant number of non-conforming structures. So if there's a setback requirement or wildlife friendly fences, we've suddenly brought a bunch of fences into non-conformity or those structures into non-conformity, we would have to figure out how to solve that issue. And then also economy of scale means that additional costs for fencing or structure placement could further limit housing development just because the costs of housing development, like these types of things could be a significant percentage of the total project because the project isn't so large that it would kind of produce a profit either through homeownership or renting. So you might be able, not be able to get the, the pro forma or the books to balance even for a small development. And that could restrict housing development. That is something that could be studied, but it would obviously take more time before we would have that information. We do want to collaborate with many small developers to understand where their costs come from and how things like this would come into play.
Okay, there's our wildlife and habitat. General comments? I have one comment just on the second one. And that I like the idea of education, but I think I'm only supportive of it in a no cost format. I don't like the idea of new flyers or anything that would be mailed out. I think those go right in the recycling. But if it showed up in the Bloomington briefing and there's a map and you see that your house is in the colored area, you're probably likely to read that or check it out or something like that. So Commissioner Goldsman.
Yeah, I would, I would second that. But I would also ask, would this be in the purview of the Sustainability Commission? Sustainability, wildlife habitat, you know, making us more sustainable as a city does this?
I think it certainly does from getting their opinion on it and helping craft the language or something to that effect, sure. But I don't think that prevents us from giving our opinion on it.
One other comment I have is, and I'm not familiar with the fencing that's been being discussed, but the practicality in my mind of that, the gap is extremely low, thinking about people that have pets. The reason I have a fence is because I have a dog and actually it's the other way around. I have a dog because I have a fence, but. And I also, I see it from, from having, you know, children with balls and things that can go underneath. And I can see that posing problems. So I just don't think the practicality of those fences, albeit an interesting idea, is feasible as well as how developed and fenced our neighborhoods are today. It just doesn't, doesn't seem like that's a real good solution, but that's my two cents.
Commissioner Curry?
Yeah, I would agree with all that. I think that the fencing is difficult. And I don't think, from what I understand, anybody wants to get into regulating fencing anymore, so. And then any low cost or no cost way to educate the city about, you know, wildlife and slopes and trees and that sort of thing, I think is a good idea.
Okay, we'll go down the list here. Number one is wildlife conservation overlay district. I'm a no.
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 Nope.
Number two is wildlife and habitat education. I am a yes, if, no or low cost.
Agreed.
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 Okay, thank you. Item number three is habitat, habitat supportive regulations. I'm a no.
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 No, and please, thought on that? So the other thought is, I kind of, again, going back to RS1 again, I think that's what RS1 is supposed to be for is you don't need to add a bunch of other regulations to the city. You can do it through the zoning district that already exists, but.
Okay. Finally, number four is wildlife supportive policies. I'm a no.
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 Nope.
All right, so in summary, I have listed all of the policy actions that I've gone over. And then I've color coded them. I've highlighted what the staff recommended actions were for the best anticipated benefit cost outcomes. So for the cost for resources and labor, these could have potentially the best outcomes. The yellow options were options that the staff had identified as having potential, but having likely high cost burdens right out the gate. So also, so internally in the city and on staff and our resources to pay for these, for data gaps or produce the policy. And then also possibly having impacts on the other side. That could impact the affordability of owning a home after someone has purchased it or is renting it. Some of those burdens could be passed on in lease agreements and that could be really difficult for people looking for housing. Also, and then the red is not staff recommended because challenges are likely prohibited. None of these recommendations mean that we can't. None of these recommendations mean that we can't do further study on more specific things. But just based on the available information and over the last several months of research, this is just kind of what has shaken out. And then in summary, let me, I'm just doing a quick check here on the alignment between planning commission and staff recommendations. So in, we, planning commission and staff recommendations align on trees. So text cleanup for clarity, no regulation there. And then also a, but not on the amending tree removal thresholds. So not going down the road of using discretion to kind of find a right fit when we already have robust standards. For slopes, pretty much split down the line. Two yeses and two no's for all of our options. That could be bringing more study or waiting for direction from city council to see if we actually want to implement those things. And then for wildlife and habitat, we had four yes for our wildlife and habitat education for low-density residential properties. So I will make sure to summarize those discussion items and recommendations from planning commission in my report with the caveats of things like the no-cost method, including Sustainability Commission, the practicality of some of these things based on people choosing to make choices with fences or other things that are fitting the lifestyle or needs. Whoops, I stopped it. No, that's an extra slide. And we're done. Thank you so much. It's, are there any additional questions or discussion items from the chair and commission?
Seeing none. Thank you very much. Great, great way to summarize this and it was really easy for us to follow. So thank you for your, for your work on that.
Thank you, Chair Cookton and Commission. I'm very pleased. I had a lot of anxiety about condensing the information. So your feedback is extremely welcome.
Thank you. Planning Commission, another five-minute recess. I think the next item will be not as short. So is that okay? We can discuss other options when we return. 9:57. Okay, we're back for item number four, which is the city of Bloomington is the applicant again. And we're just going to talk about RS1 zoning district study. Mr. Ramler Olsen, you have the staff report. Good evening.
Good evening. Just want to check, is everyone able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, terrific. Okay, I'm speaking through my computer, so I'm glad that's functioning. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members of the planning commission. I will share my screen with the presentation. One second. Okay. So here, let's go back to the title slide. Yes, so this is item number four on tonight's agenda. It's a study item looking at the RS1 district. Generally speaking, it is going to be discussing the entire district, but we'll focus in on some aspects of that district, some of the standards, and we'll review some staff drafts, potential amendments to development standards, the purpose statement for the RS1 district, bulk standards, environmental standards, and allowed uses. A little bit of background, this is the, this is the location of existing RS1 lots within the city of Bloomington. It's been split up into four areas. Staff felt this was helpful. We have Forest Haven in the north, and this is all west of Normandale Boulevard. Greenbrier, that's another area, just south of Forest Haven. Timberglade, and there were two lots along Normandale Boulevard that are also zoned RS1. Looking at the standards of the district or the existing standards, there's a minimum lot area of 33,000 square feet. That'll be very important to consider throughout this presentation. Minimum site width of the interior lots are 60 feet, corner lots is 100 feet. There are some, there's some nuance to the minimum site width. That also includes the language just below that, meeting the site width at the front yard setback line as well as the first feet, 50 feet beyond the front setback line. There's also considerations of median site width, and I'll get into that later in the presentation. And some other standards that you're probably pretty familiar with, looking at other districts. This analysis will be split up into essentially six sections. There'll be some other discussion points after that. But nonetheless, there's going to be looking at the intent first, lot area and width, steep slopes, conservation corridors, uses within the RS1 district, and a bulk standard known as prevailing setback. So this is a comparison of the current intent statement for the RS1 district as well as something that staff has drafted. It's not obviously set in stone. We want your, your feedback and your guidance to how to, you know, if you're happy with it or if you felt it could be improved in other areas, please let us know. But this is, I'm highlighting the main differences between the current and the draft intent statement. Getting into those more specific parts of the intent statement. It starts out by saying that the RS1 provides locations for a large lot, single-family development. Some optional changes that staff has drafted, noting some of the use changes we're proposing. We've come up with these options. First one, provide locations for a large lot, low-density residential. We've struck single-family because, as will be explained later, we're proposing that two-family dwellings be allowed in the RS1 district. The second option is to provide, it reads, provide locations for large lot, single-family, and other compatible residential development. So still maintaining that single-family, but we're also making note that there's other compatible residential development that we're proposing be allowed within the RS1 district. The intent statement continues where it lists the characteristics of RS1 lots. It notes that there's steep slopes, significant vegetation, wetlands, or RS1 includes areas that are substantially development as large lots in order to preserve the character of the area. Staff notes that there is an or within that, which implies that only one characteristic has to be met in order for a lot to be, to be considered consistent with the RS1 district. Staff, in light of that, staff recommends increasing that to multiple characteristics. We're, we don't feel that that's enough to maintain the uniqueness of the RS1 district to only allow or have one characteristic satisfy the intent of the district. So that would also help clarify the ability for other areas of the city that want to rezone to RS1, give them some confidence in their ability to do so if we maintain that uniqueness of the RS1 district by having multiple characteristics considered for those requests. We've included a new characteristic, large lot, low-density residential is an areas located within a conservation corridor as designated by the Minnesota DNR. I believe Michelle ran through some of those corridors in her presentation, and that's been considered as part of staff's drafts of changes to RS1. And it should be noted that this was, including the conservation corridor, is a response to some of the environmental concerns that was expressed by residents during consideration to amendments to the R1 district last year. There's a map displaying the extent of the conservation corridors in the city. I guess something to point out is it covers a lot on the west side, not so much on the east side. It's clearly going to be gathered along the bluffs of the Minnesota River. Continuing on with the analysis of the intent statement, some discussion items. By the way, these discussion items are going to be throughout this presentation. So if you want to just hit on them right away, or if you want me to save them towards the end, we can do either one, but, and then feel free to interrupt if you want more clarification, certainly. The first discussion item is, again, that beginning of the intent statement. Some of the options are to not change it. There's option two provided, provide locations for a large lot, low-density residential development against striking single-family because we're going to be considering two-family dwellings within the use table for the RS1 district. The third option, provide locations for large lot, single-family, and other compatible residential development. So maybe I'll ask the planning commission how you would like to proceed. Would you like to discuss this first, or should I just keep barreling through?
Well, Commissioners, it would be my opinion that we do these one by one as we go through them so we don't forget and they're fresh on our mind. But if people have other thoughts? Commissioner Goldsman?
I can, let's go through them now.
Okay, we'll do that now and we'll follow the same format we've been using this evening. First, we'll start with general discussion. These are a little different than I guess the first couple we've gone through because it's a little bit more of an either/or. But we'll start with general discussion on this item. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thank you, Chair. So I, so I appreciate staff looking into this as they were asked to do so by council. So I want to make sure that statement is there so that you don't take this as a comment against the work, the good work that you're doing. This should, looking at the parcels that are considered RS1, in my opinion, this should not be priority as for the city. I don't feel that RS1, as we looked at the number of parcels, makes a great impact to the overall city as a whole. It also doesn't look at how we're addressing housing and ensuring equity across our city. I know that it was asked of by council to look at these lots for potential subdivision to potentially create more housing stock in the city. And when I looked at the properties online on, in the maps, only two properties that I could see were potential maybe candidates for that. The rest of them are very established homes that are actually at the higher dollar value of all of the housing stock in Bloomington. And the likelihood of those property owners taking that house and subdividing it is very small. More likely they'll tear that house down and. More likely, they'll tear that house down and build a bigger home. The two properties that I thought were a maybe were the 10616 and the 10626 Normandale Boulevard. I actually see it more likely that those two properties be combined and rezoned at more higher density as it is on a collector's street. So I was disappointed to see this topic on our agenda today. Again, not staff. I just think we have bigger initiatives, bigger opportunities within our city than to address these handful of parcels that really don't need to be addressed. My two cents.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Chair. So I agree with part of Commissioner Goldsman's comments in that, yeah. Well, and I should start again by saying that this, we're looking at this because of the work that our neighborhood did with the city council. So I see this more as what I alluded to in the previous topic as potentially, I would say, environmental preservation in certain neighborhoods. So, I mean, our neighborhood being one of them, as well as some neighborhoods, I think, along Nine Mile Creek and along the Bluff District. So, yeah, so I don't, I mean, I don't think you're going to get many houses out of this or many new, you know, new places to live, but I think it would potentially afford the opportunity for some neighborhoods to retain the existing trees and character of their neighborhood, I suppose.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. You know, when we had some joint sessions with the HRA a couple of years ago about the R, I think it was the R1 district, not RS1, but R1, one of the comments I specifically remember making, because we were going through this kind of laundry list of items, should staff look at this, should staff look at that? I specifically remember making a comment of something about lot combination, and that it seemed really impractical that this would actually be implemented on a scale that's worth the city staff time to do this. I appreciate Mr. Raymond Olson, and if you look at the staff report, it's well done. I mean, it's long, it's comprehensive, it's clearly been looked at. But I have to agree with Commissioner Goldsman on this, that I don't think it was a terribly good use of staff time and frankly, tax dollars to look into this. I think it's bearing out exactly the way we thought it would, that, you know, you've got large houses that are already nice, and if they're going to be subdivided, the existing house is going to be in the middle of the lot, not on the side. So you have to tear down the house and then build two new houses. And if you're going to go through all that effort, they're going to be really high-end houses to get your money back. And so we haven't done anything for home equity or any of it. I just see very little value in what has been looked at here. And again, not staff's fault on this one. So getting back to the issue at hand for me, as far as this intent statement goes, I don't have a great preference. I did drive these neighborhoods before I came over here tonight to try to understand neighborhood feel. I don't live in one of these neighborhoods. I'm frankly not even that familiar with them. You know, they're actually more dense than I thought they were, for as big as the lots are, the houses are. Maybe it's because they're so big, but they're pretty close. It's not like some cities you go through and they're really secluded and whatever. They're fairly close, and I think it's actually just driving through, kind of dense. And so switching this language to "low-density" instead of "single-family" does not bother me. Commissioner Albert?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with this, and I think I agree with the comments made already. And I also think that staff did a fantastic job on this. However, it does seem to be located in West Bloomington only, and in a more affluent part of West Bloomington. And I just think we need to be really careful about what we're diving into in terms of our equity lens and creating new housing and our resources. Yes, I agree with Commissioner Curry that, you know, we should be thinking about our wildlife and natural resources, but we should be thinking about that across the city, not in these specific, very few parcels in the city of Bloomington.
Thank you, Commissioner Albert, and I'm not sure if I'm getting out of order because I don't exactly know what's coming up next, but I will make one other comment in case I forget, that there was a comment in the staff report that we're doing some of this because there's been petitions to make other neighborhoods RS1. And when you spoke about equity, and I'm not super interested in other neighborhoods in Bloomington becoming RS1. To me, it's hard to overlook the fact that other areas wanted to become RS1 once a duplex was made somewhere else. And it's real hard for me to see an argument of, well, we're doing this for the environment. If that was the case, and these other neighborhoods really wanted to protect the environment, I think we would have heard about it earlier. And so I think there's a lot of complexities to this, and I'm fine with the existing RS1 neighborhoods we have. I don't think, you know, having neighborhoods with larger lots and having, we talk about a diversity of housing stock, and I'm not against having some housing stock that is for the higher end of the market. Like, we should try to serve everybody. And so I'm not in favor of saying, we got to get rid of RS1, and we can't have large lots because we do have more affluent people that want to move to Bloomington, and we need to support them too. So I'm not against the existing RS1 we have. But I'm real hesitant about making other neighborhoods into RS1 that give more restrictions on subdividing and stuff. I'm not super interested in crafting a bunch of policies here that is going to foster that. Okay, without seeing any further discussion, this is a little different as I look at it than our last two items because we're not really voting one, two, three. This is kind of a, I want one, I want two, or I want three. So I think we'll actually just go down the line here, and I'll ask which you prefer, if that's okay. So for me, for this particular statement, I would prefer number two. And I think, I'll just say, I think it's okay to have some commentary. I'm split between something or whatever, if you're not sure.
I think one, I'm sorry. I'm leaning towards one, no change.
I have no preference.
Yeah, I think, I think one. I mean, honestly, I don't see anybody. I think it'd be difficult to build duplexes in lots that are 33,000 square feet. It costs too much money to acquire a lot.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, moving on. Moving on, there we go. So some more discussions, more points of discussion. Again, still examining the intent statement. As was made, or as a point that I made earlier, is that staff is recommending that multiple characteristics be used in assessing applications for rezoning. Right now, there is only, the "or" in the statement, only, it implies only one characteristic needs to be satisfied, but multiple seems to strengthen the RS1 district's intent. So, but nonetheless, we wanted to turn this over to planning commission to see if they're comfortable with multiple characteristics being considered. And it doesn't have to be two. So also getting an idea of what the correct number of characteristics to use when we're assessing rezoning applications.
Mr. Raymond Olson, could you just run through that list again with us, please?
Yeah, certainly. So this is, this is, of course, referring to the draft that staff has, has, I'm sorry, that has written up. But there is also some characteristics to be considered in the current form of the intent statement. But as you'll see on the slide, the characteristics being steep slopes, significant natural or native vegetation, wetlands. If the area is located within a conservation corridor designated by the Minnesota Department of National Resources, and/or substantially developed as large lots in order to preserve the character of the area. So those are the characteristics.
Thank you. I'm going to make one general comment, you know, based on the discussion we've just had. I know some of us are not a huge fan of this, just in general, coming to us, but city council has proposed this, and I think it's our duty to provide them opinions on these individual items as we see fit. So we'll continue forward with these more fine detailed things. For me, I like having more than one, just because I'm in favor of not allowing more RS1 districts. So I don't necessarily know if I feel like all of them is fair because I think you maybe get yourself into problems where you don't have this one little thing, even though generally speaking, it is appropriate or whatever. So I don't know what the right number is, if it's three or two, or if it's even, I don't know. It needs to be left to somebody's discretion, but I like some number between one and all. Commissioner Albert?
This one is tough, and I think it should be all. Because I think if you're creating a district, I think if your intent of the district is such that it, to preserve large lots, I would just say all of them.
Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks. So thinking about the list, one of the things that I think about is some of these large lots that are currently RS1 are in very just sloped areas. I'm not going to say steep sloped because we just talked about that, but they're very sloped. They are not necessarily in wetlands. So there's a little bit of a differentiation there. So I would say not all could be in wetlands, but the slope piece could. I also think about what is the, what is the area that could actually be developed in these large lots? So if they do have wetlands, can they develop in it? And at what percentage? And then does that hit their developable location? And I'm thinking about that lot that we had the other day, that was that long skinny lot, and they divided it into two. And the garage was actually in the watershed district. There's a lot of that wonkiness. So again, the practicality of this is tricky because how, how much area would they actually be able to develop in? I don't know. That's my two cents.
Commissioner Curry?
When I read the report, I think it recommended two, and that made sense to me, so.
Okay, we'll summarize by going down the line. I'm going to say two and a half.
Two. As many as possible.
Two.
Okay.
Two and a half. Okay. Moving on, so staff did a couple analyses looking at lot area and width. These analyses were conducted at two scales, citywide and neighborhood, so something broader, and then something more granular. There's disclaimers that you may have noticed in the staff reports, and that I'll just briefly touch upon. Median site width is a requirement to be used for RS1 lots. But it was not used in the citywide analysis, and it's not, and what was attempted for the neighborhood analysis is not survey-level accurate. So when we get applications, we would expect very accurate drawings showing median site width to establish that a lot is complying with the RS1 district. Staff just doesn't have those tools available, so we did the best we could. For the citywide analysis, we used lot frontage as a proxy for median site width, but there's significant differences and shortcomings by using lot width as a placeholder for median site width. That's spelled out in the staff report. We did not consider all physical site limitations, such as like lot configuration, where the structure is currently located on these lots, stormwater management. So that's a deficiency of these analyses that we had to consider. Corner lots require higher lot widths, but that data is just not readily available at a citywide level within a citywide database. So that, again, skews the analysis. So starting with that citywide analysis, we examined all R1 lots. There are over 20,000 in the city, and when comparing it to the minimum lot area for the RS1 district, which is presently 33,000 square feet, and we subjected those R1 lots to a lot frontage of 60 feet, that's the current site width for RS1 lots. But again, there's nuance and differences with how that's being measured. We found 509 lots met those two measures. Here's a geographic representation of where those are located. You're going to find a lot of them follow the conservation corridor. Actually, you'll see some overlap between where these lots exist and how they line up with that corridor, where the bulk of those lots, these lots exist. So again, 509 total out of 1400, or yeah, 1400. Looking at how many R1 lots meet the minimum lot area that was proposed during consideration of the R1 amendments. I'll just back up a little bit and provide some context to that. So there was a, there was a lot area that was suggested during consideration of the R1 amendments, and that was to lower the minimum lot area from 33,000 square feet to 22,000 square feet. That's roughly half an acre. And coincidentally, it actually matches the lot area of the previous iteration of the RS1 district. The RS1 district came into being in 1986. It was developed from the RS2 district. I don't know how they went from RS2 to RS1, but I wasn't there at the time. I'm sure there was some logic to it. But nonetheless, 22,000 square feet was the previous incarnation of the large lot residential district in Bloomington. It was then raised to 33,000 square feet and then renamed RS1. So we found 1,400 lots that met the minimum lot area, 22,000 square feet, as well as that minimum lot frontage of 60 feet. This is, again, this is a map showing where these lots are located. Again, a lot of them are clustered in those areas that are within the conservation corridors. So when we go down to the finer grain analysis, looking at those specific RS1 areas that were mentioned in that other slide, those four areas, or just three areas, I'm sorry, the two lots were excluded from this analysis. We just focused on the Greenbrier, Forest Haven, and Timberglade. We found that there were, oh, and for this particular analysis, we weren't obviously looking for rezoning because there are RS1 already. So how many would be potential candidates for subdivision or infill development under the current minimum lot area standard, which if you, in order to split it, would have to be double that, so 66,000 square feet, we found only two lots that would potentially be subdividable. This is, this is staff's analysis, but again, a more fine-grained analysis might yield different results. When we compare those lots to the 22,000 square, minimum lot area of 22,000 square feet, that standard that was proposed last year during consideration of R1 amendments, we found 10 lots. So again, if we lower from 33,000 to 22,000 square feet, you find 10 lots that might be subdivitable. Again, there's a lot of criteria to satisfy in order to do that. We also reviewed these results against the total assessed value of the properties that are zoned RS1. And for those that were able to be subdivitable, counting for an assessed value of $600,000 or $600,000 or less, we only found one lot. And we use $600,000, I mean, again, this is staff's opinion about what would make financial sense to maybe consider splitting a lot. It's, that's up for discussion if that was the correct dollar figure, but that's what we went off of. And we only found that one lot. Again, it's been the same lot, actually, in all the analyses so far. And then when we, again, go back to that 22,000 square foot And then when we, again, go back to that 22,000 square foot minimum lot area, there are thirty, there are three lots that are potentially subdivitable. So one in each RS1 area. I'll continue on. So staff also wanted to see what our peers were doing in other suburban communities. And so we've looked at the large lots, some of the, the area standards and intent, intense statements of large lots in our peer communities. We looked at eight specifically. And you'll see a table at the bottom of the slide showing the results of that analysis. The median value of the minimum lot areas for all the large lot areas within these communities was 30,000 square feet. So we're kind of hitting that already at 33,000 square feet. But then we also compared what that minimum lot area for the large lot district, compared that to the smallest single family district within those communities. And we, there's a ratio of comparing the minimum lot area for both districts and that's on the very right hand of this, of this table. That data kind of yields different ratios from, you know, 1.5 all the way up to 4.6. Where, I believe, we're in the, I think we're around 4.3. Bloomington is currently 4.3. So again, we're kind of in line with other communities with our peers or other, our peer communities. So some discussion points, taking all that information that was presented to you. Is the current minimum lot area 33,000 square feet in the RS1 district appropriate for a large lot district? Should it be adjusted to 22,000 square feet? That's again approximately half an acre. Should be lowered down to 22,000 square feet, knowing what that, the effect it would have on other properties entering the RS1 district and the subdivitability of current RS1 lots. Is there a different area requirement that you'd like staff to consider and study further? So I just leave that up to you.
General discussion. I'll start. Kind of already said it, but I don't feel the need to reduce to 22,000 square feet. For one, I don't have a problem with us having a zone that has larger lots. It diversifies our housing stock. If we want to have big, beautiful homes somewhere, I'm fine with it. This is a very small percentage of our lots. We're talking one tenth of a percent or something of our, the lots in the city is it's, it's a very small portion. So I don't see it as an equity problem. And secondly, it's again, just the impracticality of this making any difference. If we reduce to 22,000 square feet, maybe we'll see a couple of redevelopments with lot splitting, but they're not going to be affordable. If the point, if the point is to create affordable housing, this isn't it. So that's where I'm at. Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Chair. I completely agree. I think the minimum lot area of 33,000 square feet is appropriate.
Commissioner Goldsman?
Ditto.
Commissioner Curry?
I'm just gonna say I think 22,000 square feet is appropriate because it's the proportionate reduction from what R1 also had to keep it in line with R1.
Very well.
So moving on. Median lot width. Well, first I will introduce median lot width before we get into the discussion point. So as stated in that second bullet, site width for all single and two family residential lots in RS1 and R1A has approved or modified by the city after a certain date, August 31st, 2006, has, has to meet or exceed 80% of the median site width of existing lots wholly or partially located within 500 feet of the perimeter of the proposed subdivision. This the issues that were noted at the time of this creation, I think it was around 2000, oh, was it 2004, something like that, early odds, let's put it that way. So this standard was introduced because there was an attempted lot split and there was a lawsuit brought on behalf of the, the property owner that was trying to split his lot, brought against the city because the city denied the lot split, city lost. And in response to that, ordered staff to create a, a way to measure medians or to, to measure lot width that was more contextual, that took into consideration the context. However, some of the issues that were noted at the establishment was that it lowered values or could lower the values of property that were subdivitable without the median lot width standard. It would result in fewer subdivision opportunities and fewer homes would be created. Lots would most likely need to be larger to be subdivitable, therefore more expensive. And it would just increase regulatory complexity on the part of staff. We wouldn't be able to provide a very prompt service to customers that were, that were interested or residents that were interested in splitting their property. So in light of that, is the median site width an appropriate standard to maintain for establishing new RS1 lots?
Discussion? Commissioner Curry?
I, I think you can just leave it. I don't think anything's gonna change.
Commissioner Goldsman?
I, I agree and I am concerned if we take it, you know, was it put in place because of that situation and that lawsuit, right? So it doesn't, I don't think removing it seems prudent, especially if we don't change anything within the RS1 district.
I agree with you, Commissioner Goldsman. We've seen without naming anything specific, but how one very small thing can derail an entire evening and get in the way of doing real, I don't wanna say real, getting in the way of doing other city business for something that could have just been prevented. And so I'm in favor of just leaving it the way it is. I don't want to see even one of these super contentious things where we get angry neighbors and then people just don't like each other. And then you've got neighbors that never like each other because they've, they've done this. And I think this is a way to just prevent that. Keep it as it is. Any thoughts, Commissioner Albrecht, or I'll move on? Okay, moving on.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. So moving on to the steep slope section of the intent statement for RS1 districts. Lots in the R1, R1A and RS1 districts are subject to steep slope standards. The, our city code, it doesn't specifically identify slopes of 12% or greater as steep slopes, but it is, it is implied by how the section of code is presented. So this is a, this is an interpretation by staff that slopes of 12% or greater are considered steep. You, this map shows which lots or yeah, which R1 lots are, have an average slope on their property of 12% or greater. So which ones qualifies steep slope? So again, just a geographic distribution of those lots. And with that in mind, are steep slopes an appropriate characteristic by which to assess the lots candidacy for the RS1 district?
Thank you. Where I'm at is I feel the same way as I did earlier. I, I worry that four neighbors on one side have 12% and four neighbors, four neighbors on the other side do. And there just happens to be one kind of flattish lot that's only a 10% slope. And then we've got a weird thing where there's a weird parcel that can't be rezoned. So I'm gonna say no on this. Commissioner Curry?
I would agree with that.
Commissioner Goldsman?
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Ramler Olson?
Yes, Chair. A bit of clarification. Steep slopes already are a characteristic of lots that of RS, of lots within the RS1 district. So if you're saying that it's not an appropriate characteristic, are you asking staff to then, that we should consider removing that from consideration of RS1 lots? Because here, I'll go back to, if you don't mind, I will go back to the current intent statement. Wow, I'm really going up. Okay. So again, on the left, provide locations for large lot, single family development in areas of steep slopes. So we are providing some clarity, clarity of what a steep slope is by referencing this section. That's what the draft intent, draft intent statement shows. We're just providing some of that clarity. If, if you don't mind, to address the scenario you brought up about two lots abutting a fairly flat lot. The, the rezoning to RS1 would, would be, it wouldn't have, not all lots would have to satisfy, I mean, depending on how the rezoning is brought forth to the city, not all lots would have to satisfy all the characteristics. Again, there's, there's maybe a, a threshold that we would like to get input on as well is, you know, what's considered a a good amount of the lots being considered for rezoning to this part, to a particular district? Because ideally districts should be contiguous. So that means some lots maybe get caught up or may get caught in the, in the consideration for rezoning. So not all lots will have these characteristics. A majority will. Presently, are, there are some RS1 areas where not all lots within the identifiable RS1 area even meet the minimum lot area. So there is some, some nuance to this. It's just trying to establish a district and it's up to the discretion of the city that not all lots need to necessarily satisfy this criteria. But we want to offer this to how do we assess the majority? Or what, whatever threshold that the city decides is, is worth considering for rezoning. So I just wanted to throw that in there and maybe that would add a little bit more information to this, this prompt for, for discussion.
Thank you for that additional information. And as you were talking about it, you had something very similar to that in the staff report and that's my fault for forgetting, for forgetting that. So thank you for that clarification. That does change my mind. That does change my mind. And in the spirit of limiting creation of new RS1 districts, I would be supportive then of this 12% slope thing. Commissioner Albrecht?
Agreed.
Commissioner Goldsman?
As long as it's, when we talked about it being a characteristic, one of plus another. I think that makes sense based on what we were just discussing.
Commissioner Curry?
Yep, I would agree with that.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Ramler Olson.
You're welcome, Chair. Members of the planning commission. Moving on. Oh, I'm sorry. So this analysis also looked, I mean, it looked at the 33,000 square feet as well as the 22,000 square feet for which parcels have an average slope that would consider them to have steep slope. So, oh, that's R1 parcels, but nonetheless, let's keep moving on. Going on to conservation corridors. Those are included in the draft RS1 statement, as I mentioned before, based on the feedback from engagement during consideration of the R1 amendments last year. That the area of the conservation corridors is extensive on the west side. It, it covers a lot. It's, it, there is, it's fairly well developed in, in many parts. It includes a lot of land uses such as residential, office, industrial, institutional. A lot of the area where you are right now is within the conservation corridor. And something that staff wanted to wanted to emphasize is that conservation corridors were not really meant as a regulatory tool. They're, they're meant informationally for cities in order to develop plans for prioritizing natural resource restoration, restoration or protection efforts. So this was one way to, that staff thought of satisfying that request from residents last year, but we, but staff does have reservations about including it as a criterion. I already mentioned the first two bullets. The third bullet on this, this slide mentions adopting a regulatory tool to protect conservation areas identified in the, the conservation corridor boundaries could have land use implications for a wider scale and mix of properties that maybe oh, sorry, I miswrote this statement, but it may be counter to what's intended. So that's something to consider. But nonetheless, the conservation corridor does speak to the environmental preservation concerns that residents expressed last year. So is that something that you are in favor of is including location within a conservation corridor to be a characteristic of RS1 lots?
Mr. Ramler Olson, would this follow the same logic where a neighborhood, let's just say they're on the edge of this conservation corridor and the final two properties are not technically in the conservation corridor? Would this have an allowance where they could be grouped with their neighboring lots? Or is this a hard line of you have to be in the conservation corridor to be eligible for RS1?
Chair, the, the lines are a little, I, I believe, a little fuzzy. It could be, it wouldn't preclude lots that were just outside as long, again, if as far as staff is concerned, this is ultimately a city decision, but staff would not consider that disqualifying for considering to rezoning.
All right. Thank you. Thoughts? Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's probably unnecessary to add this. That it's so subjective that it might actually like weaken the definition of RS1. So I don't think it's needed.
Okay. Commissioner Goldsman?
I agree. It's not needed.
I was kind of 50/50 on it. Commissioner Albrecht?
That's how I feel too.
Clarifying 50/50?
50/50.
Okay.
Quick question for me?
Please, Commissioner Goldsman?
Are all of the current RS1 lots in the conservation corridor?
Chair, Commissioner, no, not all the RS1 lots are within the conservation corridor. Do you want me to have a map?
That's, that's okay. No, it's, it's fine.
If, I'm operating from memory, but I believe it's Timberglade and those the two lots along Norman Dale Boulevard are outside the conservation corridor.
Right.
Thank you.
Moving on. Oh, well, I'm sorry. You can see right here where, where it is. Oh, that I should, should also have included Greenbrier. I forgot I included this. Egg on my face. Anyways, yes, so this is the, the boundary of the conservation corridor. And these red outlines are showing the current RS1 areas and where they are with respect to that corridor. And they do, does show that, well, I mean, the Forest Haven area is entirely within the conservation corridor. Actually, that's the only one that's entirely within the, the conservation corridors. So that's for your consideration. Again, just comparing those two different minimum lot areas and how they, sorry, how they stack up with respect to the, their location within the conserva, or their location with, with respect to the conservation corridor. So.
Mr. Ramler Olson, perhaps this was covered in our last item and you might not have the answer. And if you don't, that's okay. Can you remind me how these conservation corridors are established? Is it by some body?
Chair, yeah, the Minnesota Department of National Resources.
With your background on these, do you suspect they could change over time or are they, is this something that's been in place since, you know, legacy?
Chair, I'm, yeah, I, I, I'm unable to say. I'm not sure if my colleague I'm not sure if, uh, my colleagues in attendance have any more information than I do on that, how often they are updated. But, um, uh, I do know that, that it starts out with the DNR and then it, um, it goes to other, uh, other review bodies that, um, kind of refine the, the boundaries, um, just with more local knowledge. And that's fed back into the shape of these conservation corridors.
I think that's, that's good enough for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, moving on, so staff also looked, I mean, when we're doing these reviews of districts, it's, it's a good opportunity to also review the, uh, the uses that are allowed within the district. They, you know, either they're permitted or conditional or some other form of allowance. But nonetheless, uh, staff did examine the use table for the RS one district. Um, and we are proposing two additions to the district. We're, um, proposing that two family dwellings and groupings of two family dwellings be, uh, allowed within the RS one district. Some reasoning behind that is that it does advance the city's goal to add more housing and it could encourage, uh, more housing diversity. I mean, I understand that the, uh, the probability of, of that, of that occurring is low. But nonetheless, it does offer that option. So, um, maybe no harm. Nonetheless, if, uh, if it's already, if it would be allowed, it would bring the RS one district into regulatory alignment with the R one district, considering that we allow two family, uh, dwellings in both districts. And we also, we currently allow groupings of two family dwellings within our, within R one. So, uh, again, creating that alignment between, between the two. RS one lots are guided low density residential in our comprehensive plan. And two family dwellings are compatible with low density, low density residential areas. So it would also be, um, in compliance or it would be compatible with what our land use guidance currently tells us. And it's not necessarily inconsistent with RS one. The, um, uh, two family dwellings aren't inconsistent with RS one. You can design two family, two, uh, family dwellings, uh, to be respectful of the environment and, uh, to protect natural resources. So, um, we didn't see that conflict there. And so, uh, two families seemed like a, a good fit for the RS one district. And we're also proposing the removal of, uh, of a few uses. These are all institutionally related. The RS one, when it was conceived, was not, uh, conceived as, in, as a district to house institutional uses like schools and whatnot that, that are defined institutional. So, um, we are removing these, it's just a discrepancy that we found within the use table. So it's, it's really bringing the, the uses in spirit with the RS one district as it was originally conceived. So I'm sorry, maybe I should stop there. Are there any questions or discussions about uses? What, what we're proposing? I suppose I should have had that prompt on this slide, but I apologize. So if there's any, if you have any thoughts about that, please let me know.
Okay. Mr. Mark regard?
Yes. Chair Cookton, one, um, thing to think about with two family dwellings. We often think of them as new construction, but they could easily be conversions as well. Imagine a large lot, uh, gets converted from single family to two family without any, you know, changes on the ground, but all internal retrofit. So something to consider there. Thank you.
Mr. Rambler Olson, I previously have not been familiar with the idea of groupings of two family dwellings. Can you just help me understand what that means?
Uh, Chair, yes. I, I, the way it's, um, uh, that staff understands or that, uh, has staff has conceived it is just, um, I mean, I think it's, it's pretty explicit in the, in the phrase itself is grouping of two family dwellings. So, uh, assemblage of two family dwellings on one lot. I don't, uh, tho- those standards, I'm sorry, that use is a conditional use already within R one. Because of the increased impacts to the, uh, the, the, the surrounding area. So it is held, uh, as a conditional use and conditions are applied to that use that if it were to be implemented in R one. And that same consideration would be brought to RS one, knowing that if you had a grouping of two family dwellings, again, an assemblage all on one lot, that'd be multiple dwelling or, uh, multiple units, but grouped by two. We knew, we know that the impacts would be, uh, greater than otherwise. And so we would still consider that, or we'd still, uh, we're proposing that to be a conditional use within RS one. Plan, you might have to provide some more clarity on, uh, the groupings of two, uh, two family dwellings.
So putting it simply, it's two duplexes.
Uh, Chair, yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Chair Cookton, uh, thanks, Tom. Uh, just to provide a little clarity on that one. And recognizing the late hour, I'll try and be succinct. But, uh, the, the way it was set up originally is that a grouping is constituted when there's more than one two family dwelling within 500 feet as measured along, uh, block faces. And, uh, that previously was, uh, only allowed through the approval of a plan development. And as part of the single and two family zoning updates last May, uh, that was changed to a conditional use. Be, uh, um, able to be approved by the planning commission subject to an appeal. So lowered the, uh, approval process to get that. But it's not two, two family dwellings on one lot. It is, uh, they have to be on separate and distinct lots, but they're within 500 feet of each other as measured along a block face. So just to clarify on that one.
You can't have two duplexes on one lot.
That'd be a town home development effectively.
Okay, thank you.
To facilitate a different zoning district.
Thank you for that clarification. Thoughts? Commissioner Curry?
I mean, I, again, I don't think, honestly, I just don't think you're going to see duplex developments done in RS one lots because of the cost of the lot. So, well, I would, I guess we could, I could support the update. I just don't see it happening at 33,000 square feet.
Commissioner Goldsman?
I agree with new development. However, you know, I think, um, planning manager, Mark regard made a good point. These homes can be relatively large in, um, square footage. And having a mother-in-law apartment, for lack of a better term, or, uh, an ADU, uh, for multi-generational families. That would, by opening up two family group or two family, that would allow for that to happen. I'm, I would be in support of allowing them to have additional housing within the structure that exists today.
Yeah, I'm supportive of it too. Again, when I drove through this, this afternoon, I, I found it to be fairly dense. And I didn't think having, you know, these are some pretty darn large houses in a lot of cases. And a duplex is going to be the same size as that. And, you know, perhaps there's some stereotypes in your mind of what a duplex looks like. But in this, if you're talking about these neighborhoods, if somebody is really going to go build a duplex, it's going to be a dang nice one. It's going to have nice finishes. It's going to be a high quality thing. And it's going to be the same size as one of these giant houses. It's just going to have two doors. And so I'm fine with allowing duplexes. Any further thoughts? Seeing none.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Chair.
One, one additional thought, Commissioner Goldsman?
So I was actually moving on to the second bullet point.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I am in support of removing those bullet points because they don't make any sense for RS one.
I agree with that.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Chair. I will move on. The next, uh, characteristic or the next, uh, subject to discuss is the use of prevailing setbacks within, uh, the RS one district. It applies to all new single family, two family dwellings, um, within R one A. And, um, I mean, currently RS one doesn't allow two family dwellings. The prevailing setback standard basically means that structures must meet an increased setback along a street of a new dwelling, uh, directly abuts, uh, one or more single family dwellings that were in existence prior to, or in existence on, like, uh, October 7th, 1974. I'm not sure what informed that data. Uh, sorry about that if I don't have that information readily available. But, um, essentially the average minimum setback of each single family dwelling on a directly abutting site, um, along the same street segment and with the same block base. That's what the prevailing setback, uh, applies to. Here's a illustration of how that's determined. So you can see how, um, again, the, the lot in the middle is, the setback is influenced by the, uh, lots to, um, to either side or to both sides of it. So it needs to consider that when it's, um, well, in this case, it's an addition. So where, where that front setback is, the prevailing setback that is. Some observations about the prevailing setback that staff would like to note and bring up, uh, before discussing its inclusion is just to note that it does impose costs on the property owner and it could have negative impacts on the lot's environmental quality. It, um, that's usually in the form of a longer driveway. So if a home is set further back, um, they're going to have to, they're going to have to have a longer driveway than otherwise. And that's an increased cost for that homeowner or that property owner. And, um, that's more impervious surface that they're putting on the, on the lot itself. So they're just serving the ground by, uh, installing a longer, longer driveway. And then, uh, and then that comes with, uh, actual financial costs to the property owner. And more financial costs with, uh, in, uh, the surveying that needs to be done to get the setbacks of abutting lots, something to consider. And again, um, similar to median side width, it just increases the regular regulatory complexity of the RS one district. And so that's something to consider if it's actually a worthwhile, uh, standard to, to maintain. So, um, I'll leave that up to you if, if it's something that should be maintained.
Discussion. Commissioner Curry?
I think you leave it. Uh, I think removing the setback just provides opportunity to just fully develop, I think, more of, you know, more of a large property and just tear it down on a bunch of trees in these neighborhoods.
I too am in favor of leaving it. I don't have a problem with the current setup. Commissioner Goldsman?
So I think about the last five and a half years that I've been on the commission. And this topic has come up twice, maybe? I'm not sure. I, I, I can't remember if they were in the RS one district. I think one of them was, um, but I'm, I'm in favor of just leaving it.
Commissioner Albert?
Thank you, Chair. Also agree about leaving it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. I'll move on. So, um, we are talking about a zoning district and there, and we are responding to some residents' interest in, uh, rezoning their property or, uh, their neighborhood to RS one. And so, uh, that's what prompted this, this study of RS one. But, uh, as far as staff is concerned, we are not recommending any wild, uh, wide-scale proactive city-initiated rezonings through this effort. We are just, we are proposing some, uh, we're looking, uh, we're providing analysis of what currently exists and recommending or providing some optional changes to it. But, um, we're not recommending any rezonings. Those rezonings can occur privately or publicly initiated. So, um, that's always an option outside of this, uh, outside of this project. However, when we do, uh, when we do have applications before us to consider rezoning, we are recommending five criteria that has to be satisfied, um, when evaluating those requests. The number one would be the consistency with the RS one intent. Is the lot or the lots being considered for rezoning? Are they, do they, do they fall in line with the, the criteria within the intent that we've been discussing tonight? Is there, um, you know, what's the appropriate level of conforming with the RS one standards? Are they meeting the RS one standards as they are? So that's something that ought to be considered and can be evaluated by the city. The scale of the rezoning action, uh, the number of lots. How many, uh, how many lots, um, are within a contiguous group? Does it make sense? And again, this would be based on, uh, the city's inter, or, uh, uh, the, the city's consideration. Staff would obviously have a recommendation, but the, the group of lots that are being considered for rezoning should be substantial and be continuous in order to form a cohesive, uh, area of the district. Neighborhood continuity, again, that kind of speaks to point number three. And the proportion of neighborhood support, um, that proportion is again, up for the cities, up to the city's discretion. If it should just be a simple majority, something that exceeds 50% or if there's another threshold that ought to be met. But, um, that's, you know, those specifics can be determined by the city, but we want to put forth those criteria when we're assessing rezoning requests. So, um, uh, do you, uh, does the planning commission have any thoughts? Or any, any sort of considerations of those, uh, that criteria?
Forgive me, Mr. Rambler Olson. Maybe it's because it's getting late, but could you clarify what you're looking for from us on this slide?
Uh, certainly, Chair. Yeah. Uh, so those five, uh, different criteria that I, I mentioned, um, are you, is there, are you, are you fine with, uh, having, are you, are you fine with actually imposing those criteria? When we're assessing rezoning requests, are you fine with the criteria as they are? Or would you recommend any, any amendments to what we've drafted? Or is this something that we should carry forward to the city council?
Thank you. Thoughts? Commissioner Curry?
Uh, I'm on board with everything on this page.
Okay. Commissioner Goldsman?
I guess the question that I have is based on the converse, based on what we've discussed so far. Are there any properties or how many properties could actually petition to be RS one? Based on the things that we've put out there? Is that even an opportunity for any properties? And if it is, then I'm, I'm in support of this. But I don't know how feasible it will be based on the parameters that we've set.
I'm having, uh, difficulty forming any, uh, worthwhile thoughts for this one. Commissioner Albert?
Uh, I agree. I'm having a hard time.
To me, forgive me, to me, what we've said already is more important to me than what any, what, any type of bow we can put on top of this thing. Okay.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'll move on. Uh, you know, some, just some, some, uh, housekeeping items, you know, we are engaging or we do have means to engage folks. We've, uh, set up a Let's Talk Livingston page where we host information about the project and it provides media, uh, by which people can submit comments or questions to staff. We've already received a few comments. Um, I emailed, uh, those out earlier today. Some in support, some, uh, or not necessarily support. I mean, there's no firm recommendations, but there are some that would like to maintain RS one as is. And then there's some that are interested in some of these changes, uh, as it may afford them subdividing opportunities. So there's a, it's only a few. So, I mean, it's not a, it's not a broad swath of, uh, feedback we've received. But nonetheless, we have this available. And just to let you know, we have, uh, a study session scheduled to the council on February 12th. And that, um, we're foreseeing, um, public hearings sometime during April to, uh, to, uh, consider any, uh, amendments to the RS one district, if there are any that are considered worthwhile pursuing. That's the end of the presentation.
Questions for staff? Seeing none, Mr. Rambler Olson, want to reiterate, we appreciate your work on this. I thought the staff report was comprehensive and well done. Your presentation matched. If we were a bit surly, it's only because it's after 11 o'clock. So thank you for your efforts on this.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you, members of the planning commission. Have a good night.
Good night. We'll move then to item number five. Mr. Mark regard with the planning commission policies and issue update.
Chair and commissioners, our next meeting is February 15th in two weeks. Just two items on the agenda. We have a public hearing, amendments to the opportunity housing ordinance, uh, which you talked about recently in study session. And then a study item on speed limits specifically on larger roadways. And then March 7th, only one item on the agenda so far, which is a public hearing on a privately initiated city code amendment to add congregate living facilities as an interim use in the I two zoning district. That's what we have coming up.
Okay, thank you for that. This is an opportunity for us to have any planning commissioners bring up anything that was not on this evening's agenda. I think I will make one comment and we had three pretty comprehensive study items tonight. And I I don't mind having long meetings. I prefer that though to be reserved for when we have applicants before us. If if we got six people that want to put up apartment buildings and we're here till 11, I am fine with that. I think there might have been an opportunity to split up these study items more than we did. And I don't mean this to call out staff. I only bring it up in this forum because if any of my fellow commissioners have comments, this is an opportunity to say it because we can't talk about this as the four of us because of open meeting law anywhere else. So that's just my opinion. I I would like to see perhaps a little more discretion with some of these more comprehensive study items. Only because I don't want us to lose focus because it's getting late and we we don't give proper focus to the last one because it was last. So. Commissioner Curry?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think sign, sign ordinance takes a lot of time. So maybe that wasn't accounted for upfront, but that would be helpful going forward.
Okay, with that, I would just like to say thanks to city staff for sticking around tonight. It's been a late one. I also want to acknowledge Lon Del Pease, who is ending his career with the city of Bloomington. From all my understandings, he's been a real asset to this community for a long time, and we appreciate his service. So a hearty planning commission. Farewell to Lon Del Pease as he departs the city of Bloomington. And a special thanks to Grant back in the control room for sticking with us, kind of an unsung hero of the planning commission, doing all the TV work for us late at night. So thanks, Grant. Anything else? With that, we will adjourn. Good night.